Good afternoon, everyone. Pardon me. We're in our committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, January 16. We have already opened the meeting, but I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of this functioning nation. How can we follow the peace of class where homeless away on my own? We are on our delegations, petitions and calculations and we have Monsters Sports Management here to present their proposal. Come on up and join us. And anyone who's out there who wants to join us is committee meeting, so we're very receptive to participation and comment and questions, so just join us at the table if you'd like. There's a seat up here, Rob.
Will it pop up?
It should.
Let's see. Oh, perfect, perfect.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll get us started. My name is JB McEwen. I want to be the development consultant for Monsters Sports Management on their proposal here. Bit of background, my expertise is in affordable housing development and I do that with the province. And how I was connected here is I studied urban planning at Quest University, Canada for four years and played for the men's team. Actually played under Alex Elliott here, so they connected me and this was a great opportunity to combine my passion in soccer with some of my professional expertise. So today we want to talk about requesting to lease a portion of the Brennan Park gravel field from the District of Squamish to build a 31,500 square foot roughly indoor air-supported recreation facility Monsters Sports Management would own, operate and construct the facility. Just quickly go over the agenda. We'll start with a bit of an intro to Monsters Sports Management and our partnership with Squamish U Soccer Association. I'll talk a little bit more in depth on our proposal. Provide some preliminary site and concept ideas that we've been discussing and we've done some massings. Project information table based on the current zoning, our partnerships, development schedule and some of the support and engagement that we've done thus far. So I'll hand it over to, we'll start with Rob Friend.
Yeah, Rob Friend here. Former pro soccer player, grew up in Kelowna, now living in North Vancouver. Twelve years, in fact, he's played 40 games for the Canadian national team. Been retired for three years now. Recently I was with the last team, Ali Galaxy, where we won an MLS Cup. Moved up to Vancouver. Own a, now I own a commercial and multifamily real estate company. And recently, in the last year, I've been brought on to start a Canadian Premier Soccer League. It's going to be our new domestic pro soccer league in Canada. So we're working on that. We just announced our commissioner last week. We hired the CEO, Tim Horton, so exciting time in Canadian soccer. I put a group together. We own a lower mainland team where we've now just been approved at a site in Fraser Valley to build a 7,500-seat stadium and a sports complex. Also partnered up with Alex Elliott and we've created Monsters Sports Management to sort of be, get back to the community, whether that's through facilities, sports management, obviously mainly soccer with our experience. And so with the help of Rob, we's here, we were kind of connected into Squamish and obviously we love the opportunity here and the growth and the demographic in the city. And we think it's a great opportunity to get back to sort of our experience in the soccer world and the sports world and, you know, and we love the Brennan Park site, so that's quick summary.
And my background quickly, obviously, ex-professional soccer player as well, but I've been the head coach at Quest University of the men's team for the past four years. And always have a strong connection with SYSA and an interested interest in the development of that youth association and other user groups in the area. And just having the relationship with Rob and then with Rob Friend and then connecting with Rob Wees as to what issues they have within space and obviously within the winter months and then getting a bit of a background of what has been happened before with different proposals like this. Bringing on Rob Friend was a big step in making this a possible reality and having the background to make something happen. Myself and the other name is Diego Agostino, we've both been involved in facilities in the lower mainland and helping them come to life. We've also been involved in the Richmond Olympic Oval and making sure that their court lines and their user availability is at the broadest spectrum possible. Also at Fortias Burnaby, putting our hand in with Windsor Bubble and then working with Razor Sports Management down the east coast, which is doing basically what we're looking to do here, which is they came in, they paid every dollar to build the facility, but were given land to go do that and then rent it back and give it back to user groups within the community. So we've been in close touch with them because they're the ones that have been boots on the ground doing it on the east coast. It hasn't been, it hasn't been done as much on the west coast, obviously because down in lower mainland, the weather's not as big of an issue, but we did see Squamish as a potential site where the user groups wanted that and we're very keen on trying to make some work.
Rob Wees, most new I am. Squamish SYSA, one of the key things we earmarked for sports or youth sports is facility, playing facilities. Obviously after last winter, a little bit of this winter, one of our biggest obstacles is having a quality playing surface due to weather and training all around. For kids and sports, just to keep them active, Squamish small growing community, families and such. Proposal that wants to put forward is great, aligns what we're looking to do in the long term. We can afford it. We're just a nonprofit youth organization, so we support them wholly and hopefully can make this happen.
So just to go over the proposal, so we're seeking a suitable lease on the Brennan Park gravel field and I'll get into the site in a second here. And we're open to negotiation on the lease length. We were originally thinking that it would be the lifespan of the facility, which is around 25 years. Monsters Sports Management will cover all building costs, financing and overall operations and return for use of the land, so basically providing this community amenity and then Monsters Sports Management in return takes on that burden of operating the facility, but also the benefit of operating that business. And then following the municipal's decision on the proposal, Monsters Sports Management will begin preparing all necessary permit approvals and also the community engagement piece, which we've already initiated, but we do some more formal community engagement as well, once we get a decision on potentially leasing the land. To jump in, oh, sorry, to site and concept. So this is the site that we decided on and Alex and Rob and, Rob Friend and Rob Wees kind of discussed what would make most sense and we felt like this would make most sense. It's all, it's tied into the turf field, there's an outdoor sport cart there as well, there's some opportunity for parking and washrooms. And then it also gives us the flexibility because we have heard that there is a need to do even a larger facility than what we're proposing here, where we could take into that other gravel pitch as well. Otherwise, that other gravel pitch can stay as an eight-a-side field, which is actually the most commonly used field in sports, especially youth sports. So that's some of our preliminary ideas. Yep, totally, yeah.
This guy allow for an eight-a-side inside, this side?
Yeah.
Correct, it's an eight-a-side inside and then it allows for an eight-a-side outdoor if that was something that the city wanted to look at.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And then just to talk, so the current zoning, it's P3 parking public space. I was just looking, it says a 33% maximum lock coverage, so if we entered into a lease for roughly the entire gravel portion, which I calculated very roughly, this will all be converted by a site survey depending on the agreed-upon leasable space. We'd be looking at 95,000 square foot site area with our bubble on 31,500 square feet of that. Height of facility is roughly 16 meters and there's the dimensions in feet there as well. And now about partnerships, so maybe I'll hand it off to Alex to talk a little bit about partnerships and different groups that we've been discussing this way.
Yeah, so I guess over the last 18 months, we've, since we looked at this with SYSA and realized that this might be a viable proposal, we started to talk to a lot of the user groups in the community and obviously there's a lot there that are local and then there's ones that can be beneficial. If you take one off there, like Urban Rec Sports Leagues, Urban Rec is the largest provider of recreational sports leagues for coed sports, from anything from dodgeball to soccer to pickleball or whatever you like. And we've had a strong relationship within, with them on any facility that we are looking to build. They're very interested in going into that market, so they'd be one of those ones that would be of massive benefit just to the local community from a youth and an adult level of just providing recreational sports, meets and tournaments and so on. If we look at, obviously the Vancouver Whitecaps Academy's on there currently, they use the Quest Field as an academy, but they'd much rather be indoors, working year-round. Same with when talking with Danny at Quest Athletics and Intermurals, again, you've got a problem up there where you have an outdoor field trying to host all intermurals plus varsity sports and then varsity sports gets the field over intermurals and then intermurals is lost in terms of having space to facilitate recreational sports and then all the other user groups. But mainly the base relationship again goes back to Rob Wees with SYSA and making sure that that user group and the 1,200-plus kids that are in that association have the availability to, not just from a structured training component, but also an open doors drop-in component, because we see a massive benefit there from, school ends at 3 o'clock, it, doors are open for them to come kick around a ball or whatever, a ball or play whatever sport they want in a drop-in set, so it's somewhat of a community safe house for them to go enjoy and play sports, especially in those darker, rainier winter months.
Yeah, just to add on to that, another piece is we really, we're coming from a soccer background, soccer context, however we want to open this up and I think we'll do this throughout our community engagement as well to other different events, different user groups. People can rent out that space for, I mean, really whatever they want, concerts, communities, meetings, anything, so yeah, we wanted to stress that as well. So preliminary development schedule and I know we're flexible on this and the reason we wanted to get in front of you guys today and have this conversation is because from an operational standpoint, we feel like the ideal time to have this open is the fall and then you can get it all prepped and going for that winter season. So we really wanted to get in front of you guys and try to push that schedule forward. So this is kind of a preliminary development schedule. We understand it is aggressive. In terms of support and engagement, we've gotten letters of support from the following groups there and individuals there and we would start conducting formal open hosting community, open houses, community meetings, et cetera, for this development if we get to go ahead with the land. The other part of that is we'd work with the municipal staff and make sure that we're aligning with their vision for Brennan Park. I've had preliminary conversations with the municipal staff and I know that they have visions for that Brennan Park lands as well and I guess so we would want to line up and make sure that we're meeting with them consistently as well and ensure that the development lines up. Otherwise, yeah, we're open to questions, comments.
Questions, Doug and Ted.
Thank you. So you're a for-profit company?
Correct.
Yeah. And have you, would you be bank financing against this site?
Yeah, so it'd be a blend of equity and bank financing, yeah.
Have you talked to the bank about what kind of zoning they would want in the site?
No, we haven't gotten details. We've done the previous financing on some other facilities and...
That hasn't come up yet?
It hasn't come up because we just, we haven't gotten that step yet, but we've been, based on our numbers, based on our sort of informal letters of intent, financing should be an issue.
And the reason I say that is, we had a group come to us, it might have been the last council term, with a more or less similar proposal, but one of the difficulties was to make that work, of course, you have to subdivide that site. You can't lease and subdivide a land for longer than three years, you're probably aware of that. And then the lease can be registered in the land title office because that's what a bank wants to finance, they mortgage the lease. But banks always, from my experience, look at what would happen if the thing failed. It's just the approach they have to take. And very often, they wouldn't necessarily want to mortgage a park, they would want to mortgage something that had commercial potential, so...
And that's where, that's where the length, the term length is important, obviously?
I get that, but the other thing that would have to happen, I think, is that the land would have to rezone for a commercial operation, not a park.
That would be something, yeah.
And then if you failed and the bank took over, then we don't necessarily have controls on what kind of commercial operation goes in.
But as a landowner, you would, right?
No, but the lease, we're bound by the lease.
Yeah.
Okay, well, depending on the language of the lease though, right? But, yeah, I...
There's also another option that the provider leases these as well. So in the case that there's issues with the bank, it's leasable, so, and that would just be on sort of a five to 10-year lease rate.
Well, that's, that is a good point and something that we can investigate and go down that path. Obviously, that path would delay our schedule for sure, right? And also require then a rezoning, which would be something, right?
And I don't want to speak to my fellow councillors, I can just tell you that that became an issue in the discussion we had a few years ago.
Yeah, okay.
If things didn't go well, the bank steps in, then they take control and then they sell it or try to recover their money.
Yeah.
Try turning it into some operation we have no control.
And we can create terms of lease whereby if you guys fail, we get the, but the lease is non-quit.
And the other piece is, is this is a temporary structure that doesn't actually, I mean, cost too much to take down pretty easily. And also depending on the equity involved as well, right? I don't think the previous group had any equity involved, so the bank would look at that as well.
It's a non-profit.
My point being that if it comes back to the district, those types of leases typically aren't finable.
Well, and that's, that's the problem, the financing. But in terms of the zoning, we have other commercial entities that run out of municipal lands. We don't have to rezone this land to be a soccer stadium. Like, you can't see from there, you gotta come up. You can still see that, can you, Neil? And I don't know if Neil's the right person or Gary is, but it would come to...
I think it would come down to what is in this zoning, I don't have the T2 zoning, pardon me, but if the use is permitted,
it's fine.
It's a recreational use, which is permitted in the zoning.
Yeah, I don't even think there'd be necessary to rezone it, but that's just lying flush on it. Gary, do you want to speak to it more or...
No, I'd agree with Neil. It would seem there's not a use issue and a rezoning issue here. If we wanted to do this, we would rezone it.
No, exactly.
Yeah.
Most smaller sports facilities across the country are actually leased land from these problems.
Yeah, yeah, so just lean in when you speak, just so the microphone can get. I've got Ted and Susan.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I was going to bring up what Doug did, we did have a group in here, so we're a little bit experienced in this kind of thing and they didn't have pro soccer players on there. But just to that map there, can you just bring up that...
Which one?
... photograph there? And this is just...
This one here?
That one will do.
Yeah.
You know, we've got that horse arena and when I saw that go on this particular field, I don't know, what are you going to use for a surface on there? Is it going to be a...
It's just turf.
With turf inside?
Yeah, so the exact same turf that's on the outdoor field will be a similar grade of turf on the inside.
A little bit of work will be done there, right?
Not too much because of that. Rob, do you want to talk on the preparation of that?
It's in the report.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just, I know we've talked about that before. But I just wanted to point out for everybody, the fact that we've got a horse ring right there to the right. And the people that really use that horse ring the most have a big tent like what you have and they're rezoning their land. And that tent's not going to be there much longer if they're rezoning, so there's going to be housing there. And that's going to eliminate all the people, not all of them, but the majority of the people that have horses in that neighborhood, that all of a sudden are going to be...
Well, you're way ahead of it and it has nothing to do with this.
Well, I'm just pointing out an opportunity to use a different site potentially instead of what has already been constructed is where those horses are. And, you know, Gary, that, that application is in for rezoning?
It's on private land and it's...
You're saying it'd be a private land purchase?
This is not private land, that's district land.
Yeah, these, these aren't feasible on private land. That's why across Canada...
I'm just pointing out that the horses might not be there much longer. That might be an opportunity to use that site as well. I mean, we're taking soccer fields that are already existing and leasing them out to you where we could maybe put it there.
Add an additional, add an additional one, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Oh, right.
That's all the point was, yeah.
Okay.
And then on the rents, I mean, how do you keep it affordable for everybody? I don't have staff, Scott, that far yet on it, but you know, we got all the little kids that want to play soccer there and...
I'll answer that, so there's a for-profit rate and a non-for-profit rate, whether it be, obviously, community centers do that, but also the private ones like Fortias down in the city have a, have a general rate for those groups, so in SYSA's case, as a, as a nonprofit youth soccer association, they're getting a heavily discounted rate and that rate's usually between 40 and 60 percent based on the user group. And then for-profit groups like Urban Rec that would come in and run leagues or tournaments, they'd be getting that for-profit rate. But again, we'd be, have to be providing those rates based on the going rate.
And we'd have a schedule where it was fair to the community, I mean, obviously they'd want to get back, the neat buck stuff instead of...
Exactly, so the agreement with SYSA already, already goes and takes on four to five weekdays of all the prime-time use and we said, when we say prime-time use, we're talking about from 4 to 8 p.m. So that's already been agreed with, that's why I say so that that's available to those youth kids in that association. And then there's obviously, there's extra space that for other, other sports and other programs, because again, we want this to be looked at as a multi-sport use complex, not a soccer complex. Obviously, we have a soccer background, but this is multi-sport, this is, we want 100-plus different sports to be played here because it can be that.
Peter?
Question, what's the lifespan of the facility itself?
It's 25 years?
Twenty-five to 30 years based on the, on the material that you end up going with.
They decide to use, which...
You guys would look after the maintenance and upkeep of all of that yourselves?
Yeah.
And servicing and that sort of thing.
Exactly, yeah.
Just looking at the pictures in the package here, the interior, so that, that would essentially be the interior, there would be no change rooms, nothing else in there, just the field itself?
No, that's a very conceptual, depends on what, and it depends on, on what we can feasibly do.
Most, most bubbles, these air-supported structures, they have sort of adjacent exterior bathroom facilities. I don't know if anyone's been to the Windsor Bubble down in North Shore there, at Windsor School, it's a 30,000 square foot facility. They sort of have these modular bathrooms because of the system, there's not a lot you can do inside and build out and it keeps it efficient, cost-effective.
And in most of the bubbles, they want every square foot they have to be recreational use maximized and that's when we talked with Rob, is going, if the facility went there and then you have the turf field and then later on the line, maybe there's another outdoor eight-a-side pitch there, then maybe the washrooms or that overall area for the soccer pitches and soccer and the multi-sport facility would have maybe more than just the current one porta-potty, I think it is, right, there right now.
Potential efficiencies, yeah, that everyone can use it and do one build.
These are all the small pieces that we can, we can work into leases if that's where we go.
So for the youth soccer association, so right now, you know, Saturday morning, our fields are covered with kids playing soccer. So how does this building fit into how you use our fields? What does it allow you guys to, to do that you don't do now or how would you structure your programs?
Well, when you shut down now over the holidays, Christmas and January because of the snow and rain, obviously can't use the grass fields or the turf field because you have to wait till it melts. So, you know, obviously programs are put on hold. Last season was the worst season. In 50 years in the North Shore, I think they lost 40% of the playing time, fields. So kids, what they do is they become inactive, they have no place to play. It's not just soccer, you know, we do have the fields to play in grass, but we don't have the ability to play all the time. And there's a desire for kids to play, not just soccer, sports all the time, as you know, there's a lack of amenities and facilities and we live in a wet, rainy climate. So what it does is allow us to expand the programs, expand games and playing time from all ages. You know, probably about 50% of the time because really there's key hours that people use facilities and the weather dependent right now. Regardless, we have a great turf field, but we can only use it partially. You know, it sits empty during the daytime, the turf field, even the grass field, because people are in school and people go to work. But with the indoor facility, these guys know what they're doing, provides amenity to the community, the kids, the families and all their sports to really have, be more active. You know, even if you're a mountain biker or a baseball player, weather dependent, you're, you're held back by the weather storm.
I just follow up. So could you accommodate like all the Saturday morning play in this facility through December, January?
Not all the Saturday morning play to the size of fields depending on age bracket. So eleven-to-elevens on a full-sized pitch, but the majority of U-13 and down, yes.
So you would see that?
Yeah.
As an addition to your program?
With the majority of the kids, U-13 now play in the grass field now, so all those kids, weather, snow, whatever, could play inside this facility if it was organized that way. Which is the bulk of the youth players.
I'll add, just quickly, there is lines on there and all those are the dropdown currents that divide it into eight pads and those eight pads essentially become a training pad for a youth team of any sport and specifically for soccer. And then it splits into three, five-a-side pitches and then it splits into one eight-a-side pitch, so you could run games on it, but primarily it's for training and community use and going out and playing sports where you wouldn't have anywhere else to play them at a, at a time when it's snowing. So it can, it can facilitate games, but we're hopefully looking for a multi-sport training facility over just providing an alternative when, when the snow is out.
So just to give an example, again, I'm using the North Shore Bubble as an example because it's same size and dimension. I coach my daughter's U-5 team and U-8 team. It's a factory on weekends, so what they do is they basically divide them into one eighths, same-sized facility and basically from 8 a.m. to about 3 p.m., Saturdays, Sundays, girls, and it's a factory and we're training on one eighths and then the next team comes in, same thing, and then as the older groups come in, then they split it into basically the dividers and one thirds day and then they play kind of width-wise. And then when the older teams come in, then they spread it out, so it really kind of maximizes it based on ages. And then to Rob's point, I coach my, my U-10 boys and my son as well and we play Saturday games on the dimensions you see here, the one-third as well. So again, it really, it has a lot of different options, how you sort of divide and split it up, so.
Tim, I'm wondering if you want to join us because I, I know we sort of get these types of proposals that come in. In the last year, as we've gone through this master planning process at Brennan Park, we've tried to let that process go through before we moved any of these initiatives forward and there's rugby that wants space, there's you guys, there's sports people that are looking, we're constantly inundated with this. And I know that the master plan is coming to council soon, or at least the initial going out to the public piece of it. So maybe just talk about the timelines and I think council's deliberation is how, you know, first of all, do they like the idea of this type of proposal from a leasing point of view, both tactical point of view? And secondly, is it something that fits into the vision already and we can move forward with it sooner or do we need to figure out how this fits into the master plan? So council's got a couple of sort of things they need to mull over.
Sure. Thank you, Aaron, councilman. Thanks for your presentation. It looks like an exciting facility. As council is aware, we're, the district is currently undergoing a recreation facility strategy, which should be coming to conclusion shortly. The next step is to embark on a much deeper dive around Brennan Park and the recreational amenities to prioritize and make sure it's a good fit. So in short, I think there's some real opportunity here, however, I think it might just be a little bit early and that we need to engage the community and this certainly can be part of it. I heard your commitment to community engagement and that could land us in spots where all users feel considered. And although there's many, many great things here, it does, it does spark quite a few questions that I staff would have before I feel comfortable making a recommendation, this is right for our community.
If I, if I think backwards, can you give a timeline slide to him?
Yeah.
So if your goal is occupancy essentially by the fall, ideally you start construction in May?
Well, yeah, that's, that gives us a...
I just want to understand.
That gives us a lot of time, I mean, we, the actual time to put this up is really quite quickly.
Under six weeks, yeah.
So I, I've just added for, I mean, additional site work, anything, any, any variables, that's...
And to put this up, that is the turf and the structure?
And the bubble, correct.
Does the turf last longer because it's protected from ultraviolet and et cetera?
Yes, but the turf, the 25 years based on the actual, the bubble itself, the turf would have to be replaced one time within that timeframe.
Within a 12, 13 year...
And then little patches and things could occur otherwise, but the overall turf would, would be between 10 to 15 years based on the grade of turf you, you pick. But the overall turf would would be between ten to fifteen years based on the grade of turf you you pick.
I have Doug and Susan.
Yeah, excuse me, and this question is to Rob.
Please, Rob, this is.
Rob Wayes, pardon. The Soccer Association, because when we were dealing with the turf field issue, uh, which actually will track two council terms, or three council terms now, um, the plan put forward by the Youth Soccer Association was for the second field to be on that gravel pad eventually. Um, obviously, we're only doing one at a time. Um, and this would occupy, well, in effect, would call for lease of entirely that whole second field area. Is the is the Soccer Association abandoned that idea or?
The Soccer says she doesn't have the money. There's no real grants. Obviously, the first turf field legacy grant from the Olympics, huge amenity to the community. But as a nonprofit, we don't have the money or the resources, um, we're kind of at the mercy of just, you know, as town grows. Even if you grow the association, grow the support, it's just the costs go up higher and higher and higher. So it's well beyond our sort of reach, so to speak. It's either the way, from a personal standpoint, boy reading is the association, we discussed it, that field user space for not just soccer, youth sports is the number one priority. It's the only way it's ever going to happen is whether the district comes up with the money, which obviously districts under constraints as well from many fronts, or a private entity does it in a partnership with the district that serves the youth sports. So for us, if we could have a field that's owned by the district and solely for the that use, um, sure, but it's not realistic. And this is a better financial plan, it's a better sort of opportunity for the community to get an amenity without having to put the funds.
Uh, Susan.
Thanks. Um, I'm generally in support of finding different ways to finance things, but when I look at this, first of all, there's no finance. I couldn't find any financial modeling and without those financial modeling, I would not feel comfortable.
Yeah, we can provide that.
That would be great. Um, as well, the issue of bringing in of having a facility that's on district-supplied land, but then inviting people from all over to use our facility means that at some point you're going to conflict with our needs in the community. So that means that our teams will be having to pay for privatized privatized use of space uh in order for you guys to make your to make your commitments, your financial commitments and in order to pay for uh things like infrastructure renewal, uh, the electrical in the electrical infrastructure that's going to be needed for this, uh, that the prices are going to be, uh, I don't know if you charge outside communities more. I I know I get your nonprofit-for-profit funding model, but as far as I'd need a lot more information in order to approve anything like this. And because it's just a trade event, I recognize that you can run some games in there. But uh outdoor training and and like indoor training for a few months isn't a reason for me to commit district land to right away. Um, I've thought about this a while because it has come up a bunch of times, but unless I have some financial plans and uh and commitments to our community's use above all others and not just opening up a private facility where you've committed to these hours for, as our community grows, we're going to be needing more and more space, so.
So so you'd like to see our financing plan? And then would you also like to see sort of the hourly rate based on sort of not for community, not-for-profits versus uh outside uh private groups?
Yeah.
So, I mean, then obviously the major user group is the local soccer club. And they would be utilizing ninety percent of our prime-time hours, which are the majority of the hours.
Whether whether we, I think, these are all things that could be written into the negotiation of lease if if it gets that far in terms of ensuring that our community groups and it diversify diversify.
We're not expecting to sign off without without more information, obviously. And if the question you need, then we can provide that.
Yeah, the one the one piece we hope we we get looked at as a group that's providing the facility and the availability of it, but we're not trying to run our own programming in it, um, where I know some of the other people that came before were running whatever their own private academy or whatever they want to call it. Um, again, we're hopefully being looked at as providing the facility and rental groups is is and partnerships like that. That's why I say is what needs to fill for this to succeed.
And the devil is in the detail of this and this is the preliminary conversation.
Currently, the uh the gravel field isn't viable where the field is underutilized. It's only the last resort, not just for soccer, for random. Uh, district land had it has been used by profit organizations for con uh festivals, which, you know, create funds and generate. The other district properties that are private entities that have outside users that pay, you know, profit, not-for-profit, golf courts, leased land, I believe, districted or demolished. Um, so it's a good way to utilize land that's underutilized. Uh, it, you know, it's it's there, um, it's it's not like, again, not just soccer, it's multi-sport. And a lot of people gravitate, and this is not just two months of the year, three months a year, it would be used all year round. Um, one advantage of having is that currently we, you know, we have the turf field lit, um, spaces, weather. It's not just snow, it's rain, it's cold, uh, darkness, and the little kids, I mean, adults want to train inside in the, you know, complete darkness. So it's a to toilet twelve months of the year, um, yeah.
Can you go to Neil, maybe you can give some context to some of the questions that are coming down and then I'll go up that ten here.
Thanks. I think from staff's perspective, I kind of echo Tim's earlier comments. I think from Marcus, I'd be just, we're looking to figure out where to move forward from here. And we will be bringing a real estate strategy forward hopefully within less than a month to council to uh to to get a broader context that we found in that process. And and part of that's going to be discussing a broader community engagement program for Brenham Park. And so I think before council makes the decision on how to move forward with this, from my perspective, I would like to see council have the opportunity to see the bigger picture. Um, you can make that decision whether to fast-track this process for this particular use or to have a hand in with the broader context at that point in time. And I think I'd rather see council have that content before the decision is made.
Thanks, Ted.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I like, at least you said the way to move forward, so that's good. I really like it. I uh, we've been dealing with those all-weather fields for the six and a half years I've been here. And I know they're not very good in the all-weather, they're not all-weather because they they don't drain properly. And I think I I don't know if it was five hundred thousand or a million bucks to put the drainage in them to make them usable. And with a bubble over them, the water's not getting in, they're usable. The, you know, the leasing, you know, if you, if I was going to lease it to you and it was my land, I'd go, okay, I'll lease you the first bubble. And then if that's works, then I'll lease you the second bubble, you know, wouldn't have to be the whole works, rig off the upper. And uh, um, so I'd also want to see a bio clause in there. So if things weren't working, the district would have an opportunity of buying the house, right? But soccer, um, you know, I had four kids in soccer, so I was standing around those soccer fields for almost twenty years. And it's just the best, absolutely the best. It's, you know, it's it's affordable, it's nice running and healthy and and it's becoming a bigger and bigger sport nationally. So I I would I would want to support this. I think that when staff are looking at it, I mean, it's staff are cautious, that's what we have staff where to keep us in line and be cautious. But if our timelines don't let this move forward, like if you're saying you'd like to see the master plan come out, well, you know, we've been waiting for a master plan for a while and we want to see your thing before it comes out. I would rather we somehow talk about it so that this timeline works. And whatever you feel needs to come out, let's let's kind of shake that to the forefront and, um, you know, looking at our budgets, the way we're spending money, we're not going to have the millions of dollars it's going to take to turn them into all-weather unless we really start focusing on that. We we don't seem to be focusing on that. So I I think this is our win-win.
I said, um, Karen and then Peter. Um, just quickly, that proposal talks about potentially holding events there. Can you talk a little bit about how other facilities are being used for non-sport activities?
Yeah, I'll give um just a general idea of, um, I'll use the Richmond Olympic Oval just because we've been working on it for seven years. And that's just, that's one of the facilities that, again, all the netting goes up and the from whether it be a science fair or whether it be uh used for a bike race where it's actually the hub where they're dropping their bikes off and then um grabbing snack or whatever, now they go. Or it's for a a big uh meeting, maybe a giant city council meeting or.
Giant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rock Festival.
Yeah. But a general day, the way we see this is that the door's going to open at five or six A M. It doesn't matter when the light's out, but that starts with seniors walking around on the turf safely when there's ice out. And then it ends up being a a yoga group and then it ends up being um maybe potential uh Olympic athletes that need that indoor training space to do their sprinting on or do whatever ever sport they're doing or BMX bikers or whoever's in the community. And then it goes on to that three P M. after the day or after the school day is gone and has that hour or two built in so that it's a safe house for those kids that are coming in. They can go, they can drop in on membership and so on and be part of the community. Then it goes to the structured, that's why I say time or other user groups that want time and can and can and can rent time. And then the late-night hours are also very key because those user groups are usually the sixteen to nineteen, twenty-year-olds. And they'll be there till eleven, eleven o'clock in somewhere that's a safe environment instead of doing whatever else could they might be doing. And that's a really important piece, is it doesn't just shut down after the youth at nine nine P M. We see it eleven, eleven-thirty, the Richmond Oval, Fortias, those type of facilities, there there's kids in there playing all day. And and I call them kids, but a lot of in a lot of cases, they're twenty-one, twenty-two years old.
And and you talk about this being open twelve months of the year. It's really not just to bridge the budget gap. It is a facility that athletes are using.
Twelve months of the year, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And it looks from your renderings essentially that the sides go up, so you're getting fresh air in there.
Yeah, and some, um, there is the um the tennis club on Sixteenth and Granville in Vancouver. Um, they do remove the 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 bubble, the bubble from the courts during the summer months. You could do this in this case, but it just wouldn't make sense with the amount of rain you keep it up. The clients are still going, or or user groups are still going to be happier going in there with the bubble up. It it does, it only costs about twenty-five thousand dollars to take it down and that's why that private club does that. But it wouldn't be the case in this, it would stay up here around.
It provides the opportunity for guaranteed uh good weather, basically. So when different user groups want to want to book it in in the May, they know that that it's going to be a controlled environment. There's no rain, they can plan for that, whether that's some sort of uh conference or sporting activity. So it just, and 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 being a former player and coaching my kids now and as you touched on there, um, stand in the rain, kids stand in the rain, whether it's snow, whether it's camp, practices being canceled. It just provides that guaranteed use that obviously living in the environment, the weather environment that Swamish has, um, it's just such an advantage and and clear span, um, controlled environment for your kids, for your, for the adult leagues. Again, it's 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 a great opportunity and uh and again, the puzzles provide that and and keep it sort of cost-effective, so.
Thanks, Peter.
Um, I'm not adverse to the idea for sure. I think the the multi-use aspect of it would be a youth mandate for the community. Uh, and it's something that we would see being used at its capacity in fairly short order. Um, but I know that the Brenham Park master plan is coming forward very soon and I would like to be able to see how a facility like this may fit in with some of the other recommended uses and some of the other concepts that we have involved in that plan uh before making any judgment on this. So that's for my staff.
I have Doug, uh, Susan, Jason and myself.
Thanks. Um, I think I'd also like to wait and see the master plan come forward um before I made any decision in this. I I'm not absolutely violently opposed to it, but I have to tell you, this is not my first choice. Um, this is kind of a model. I would prefer, if there is a need for this, and I accept that there probably is a need for this, uh, that it be done publicly, um, and us financing it. Um, and we can do that, uh, if we have a will to do that and other budget constraints allow us. Um, because we can finance probably cheaper than the private sector can, is the reality of it. So um i- if that's where our community is going, then I think um my first choice would be to see it done by the district uh as opposed to a private operator. I am concerned about taking a piece of prime recreational land and putting it into, you know, since putting it into private hands for thirty or forty years. Um, I get the comments about we, you know, we're at the lease so that it can, you know, with uses and so forth. I also understand bank financing a little bit and and um I have a feeling we come to a point uh with where things that you would or the bank would want and we wouldn't or vice versa. Uh, and that could be a conflict point as it has been some other times. Uh, public-private partnerships can work in some circumstances, and this is like a three D, like a bridge or whatever. Um, it saves the district the cost of financing, that's the purpose of them. Uh, as they say, it might be better for us to just do that. Uh, I I personally hadn't given up on the second field one day becoming a turf field and I know that there's no Olympic funding out there anymore. Uh, the last one cost us about one point two million. Um, and in a growing community with depending on what industry shows up and so forth, those numbers are not uh astronomical. They are manageable numbers. Uh, and you might find a council with a will one day to actually go for the second field. Not necessarily under a bubble, but sort of go back to the original plan. And I personally, as I say, had not given up on that. So I'm not absolutely shutting the door on this, uh, but I think there are still a lot of questions and there's a lot of other pieces that would have to fall into place.
Just want to make everyone cognizant of time, we're way over it. Uh, we did start with, so appreciate that. Um, I have, I'm sorry, we have Susan and then Jason and then Ted and I'll finish it up quickly.
Thanks. Yeah, I would agree with a lot of the comments that council raised made on privatizing, although I recognize the benefit of the model and that's why the finances are important to me as well. I just had a question about the turf management. If you're allowing, I know our turf is incredibly fragile. We only allow a certain shoe on it, we can't, so I'm wondering what's different about the turf that you're using that it can be used for trade for so many different uses plus putting a concert on it, you know, or like or other public events? I don't know how the turf.
Maybe speaking to the type of all-weather turf.
Yeah, I'll answer just really quickly, there there's a there's a vast, vast range of different grades of turfs that we can put in there and so on. Um, and it it's it's a lot more durable when it's not getting weather. Um, and then also um being able to rake it quite frequently because again, you're not dealing with any weather. And one of the biggest ones that that kills the life of outdoor turf fields is actually the snow. And when that goes off, all the rubber that goes with that snow has, in a lot of cases, um, a lot of public fields or associations will actually clear their turfs like they do in North Van and that takes away a ton of rubber. And then to go purchase that rubber again, refill it and so on. So it's a lot more durable inside and we'd also be selecting a grade of turf that's that is less rubber-filled and more bristle-filled. So it would be a lot more durable to say, go put a BMX bike on that, jump around off whatever um temporary jumps you brought into the facility. Um, so yeah, it would, it's a it's a similar, it's a similar, it'll look the same, it'll feel the same, but it will be a much more durable indoor type type turf.
Uh, Jason.
Yeah, um, I'm with Council prior and this, I really like this idea. Um, and the sense that I'm getting from it is that this is this is kind of a a unique project that brings resources into the community that otherwise wouldn't be here. Um, so to that end, you know, if I, uh, if we had a chance to actually review the financials and see how that looks, I think that would be really, really important. Um, and that would help us to, you know, perhaps say this is a very unique opportunity and we don't want it to get bogged down in bureaucracy. Uh, I mean, it is be one thing if we're demolishing a facility or demolishing a forest or something like this is a gravel field. So I think that it's fairly low risk. Um, and then the other thing that I'd like to see is um sort of how you would work on the nonprofit fee schedule going forward. So what is the process in place? You know, you'll have your starting fees, but obviously over the years they'll have to increase and whatnot and change. And what process goes through uh determine that because that, I think that's important to make sure that we as a district have some um assurances of affordability for the community. Um, but yeah, I I think, you know, a covered a covered field, we can definitely use that. And I know that people are very anxious to for us to get a um second sheet of ice for our arena. And if this is one less thing we have to do in terms of the soccer stuff, then that helps us get our arena upgraded faster. So I'm definitely enthusiastic about this.
Appreciate that. And just on that.
So I'm just going to try, we're really.
I'll be really quick, thanks, Patty. Um, I'm just wondering if in our master planning process, we're asking, do, does the community want a bubble? Is that if that's a question? And uh, and uh, this is twelve months' use. This is a twelve-month, you know, we're always here and we're going to have places for the kids to go and it's till midnight. I mean, you could have kids, I I and it's an under-used gravel field. It's not just a gravel field, under-used gravel field.
Yeah, I actually really like this proposal too. Um, when I think of it in context of the master plan, I think, is it going to conflict with that? And I don't think it will. I think this type of thing can actually fit or, you know, dovetail quite nicely into whatever plan would come up. It's not changing the use, it's still people, kids, families using this facility as a field, but augmenting that because you can do it basically twenty-four-seven throughout the year. I think even municipalities with far larger coffers than us, uh, North Van, West Van, Vancouver, name pretty much every city down lower mainland, uh, have just many more taxpayers, branch of infrastructure, even they need to go to these private public rental models on the recreation front. recreation front to deliver all the services that their citizens are looking for. Um, so I'm, I'm open to that. I think the devil is in the detail in terms of, I, so I guess from my point of view is if we actually get this real estate strategy and master plan in the next couple of weeks, make sure it dovetails, you know, but I'd actually like to move forward on this. That indoor space is so critical, um, for so many of these, not just the soccer and I think it will augment. And I've been here long enough to know, we, we talked about this type of thing twelve years ago when I was here and we're not gonna be able to afford it in the timeframe we'd like to have it as a municipality. So, um, if we can figure out something that's fair to the taxpayer and fair to the users and make sure you guys have a, a business model that, that makes you solvent and all those good things, then I think this could be a legitimate for everyone. Um, so I, I, I'd like to see us move forward with exploring this concept. We do need to understand the financials and, and the risk and, and can we buy it out if we wanna buy it out or whatever, whatever those deals or those variations within a potential lease. Um, the, the only other thing, I'll just put a small caveat on there. We do, um, have generally guidelines on how we do procurement in the community. Um, so we do often in these types of situations go up to an RFP and bring us a proposal. We don't have to, that's certainly how we like to do things for transparency and openness with the community, but we can consider things if there's really good reason outside of that. I just wanted to sort of outline that piece of it. Um, but, you know, I'm kinda tired of talking about finding this indoor space for people to use. Um, and I think we have a solution that could work for everyone here. I think we have to work on some details. Um, and, you know, I, I looked at and said it's not big enough. I wanted to cover the whole field so you can actually do, uh, indoor everything and, and have multiple users, but maybe we have to go to that. Like one quick question, i- if you build the turf inside and you put this structure in and, and, and let's say in ten years we determine that really we wanna turf the whole thing, can, can you, or maybe it's twelve years, cause that's when you have to replace the turf anyway, but maybe there's a clause in there that says, when you replace the turf here, we explore the possibility of expanding or we have options to expand that in the future. I think these are all details that can be worked out in the lease. Um, and there may be a, uh, opportunity with doing it all now versus later and that may fit in with the business model you guys have or not, but I kind of actually see this, I think this will be over prescribed like that. Um, and likely we're gonna need to double size or we're gonna say, oh, okay, it should have been bigger.
Well, ju- just to touch on that and, and the exercise we've gone through, we started, cause we started with a half-sized field because we didn't understand the demand here. And as we've talked to all the different user groups, we've sat down and said, oh, always want, we need a full-sized facility here. The demand can fill, and, and SYSA is already filling it, filling it most of the time. So I totally agree with you and, and the beauty of the inner of these bubbles, you can pop them, pop them up, down, you can, you can, you know, replace the turf. So, uh, you know, it's, it's very versatile in that, in that sense. So we'll totally explore, explore a larger facility off the bat. Um, and then I just, uh, Council raised, I just wanna touch on the financing. We'll provide and we can, we can show our financing, make sure it's secured. Um, there's, there's a few different options we have. So to give, to give, uh, the city the confidence that we can, obviously again, that's digging into the details and we can provide all that, so.
But I think from the city's point of view, we wouldn't, uh, go into a lease that somehow put our lands in jeopardy for perpetuity to have any personal entity there. We want it for a specific purpose, which is leisure and sport for our community in a weatherproof environment essentially. Um, so we, we would write that into the lease and, and that's, then you make a business decision whether that's acceptable to you or not. Um, so, uh, so I know this is, do we have a date for when the, mm, real estate strategy masters, when, when is that coming?
Mid February.
Mid February. Um, is this something, can we, I'm just wondering if we, I, I just trying to figure out, I don't wanna disrespect the master planning process completely, but is this something that can be sort of tangent, you know, done in parallel for the next month or two as this moves forward? And if, if there's a glaring, this just doesn't fit in, we'll know that in mid February. Um, how, maybe I'll look into the CIO to help me figure out exactly what this process may look forward. If Council determines, I think I'm hearing general support for the idea, there's some obviously concerns and fundamentally, uh, wouldn't move forward until a, a lease is actually figured out, if that, if that's the direction it tends to go in. But, uh, Linda, where would you see this sort of?
Well, Mayor Heinzman, I mean candidly, of course, we've heard staff recommendation, the ideal is to wait for the strategy, recognizing an opportunity isn't always timed well or ideally either. Um, I'm sure staff could begin the initial work with the proponents in terms of getting the financials and exploring ideas. I mean, there's the sponsor grant issue that we would need to look into. I mean, those details could start now, certainly, um, so that we were ahead of that. And then with the master planning, as long as the proponents are willing to do that work, recognizing the risks given the master plan coming forward and Council may change their mind. So that's what I'm.
A lot of the works, work's been done, so we don't have no problem with that.
Tim, Neil, and then Linda.
Uh, thank you, and some excellent, robust, uh, discussion. I just wanted to check out expectations. Um, the real estate strategy is, is, is for February. Um, but upon that, that's when we were gonna do the deeper dive into recreation at Brenham Park. The delivery of the community, community engagement is, is not gonna be ready.
This would be before that, I would like that.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
So I think from my perspective, I go back to the leasing license process I typically follow. The first question that I, I think, I'd see answer or give some direction on is whether or not this would go up to an RFP or whether this would be sole source, because if it's going to go up to an RFP, obviously the process, if it's gonna be sole source, then they can continue to work through this process, bring details forward. And some of this information that comes forward could even become part of the community engagement process, depending on what we show. So I think from my perspective, like on our chain of events, which we start with, is this gonna be a, an RFP situation or a sole source situation?
Um, you do wanna add to that, Linda?
I was just gonna add, I've been hearing from Council and I know that I'm not in the debate, but if we go down this road and are directed to work with the proponent, we need a motion today in that sole source vein to do that. Um, and then certainly, once we dig into it with the proponents, we can come back to Council around, okay, we're going out to engagement for the Brenham Park, um, plans, do you want this as part of the engagement or are we moving forward?
Just wanna add one sort of.
Yeah.
Um, between sole source and, um, RFP, uh, the group Monster has put about eighteen months into it. So if you did choose RFP, basically, um, any component came along, even if they did have their stuff together, it would take them over a year to be where at they're sitting in front of you now. So you basically put the reset button on the possibility of it, so.
We're really overdue. I, and I think, I don't think Council's ready to say, go do it today. I think we had a really good conversation, I think we need to, we, Council needs time to digest the pros and cons of sole sourcing versus not and all that sort of thing. Uh, but I don't want it to linger, cause I, I wanna be mindful of your timelines to get something up by that fall. Um, you know, ideally.
Yeah.
I've never seen anyone hit a deadlines on these things. But, um, anyway, so I, I, we're not gonna use all of today, I just didn't want people to get too far down there.
Thanks. Um, I wanna point out that the communities that this has been successful in are incredibly dense and I don't know of too many smaller sized communities that are using social profit models to do this sort of infrastructure and condescend of the Brenham Park master plan. And, uh, you know, I wouldn't feel comfortable with going, it may be that it's next year and not this year, but, uh, in order to accommodate our policy, this is public policy that we need to, and also capacity, it's not just, you know, we're struggling with capacity with our staffing. So it's, you know, I appreciate all the work that's been done, but it doesn't have to be a right now project. If the need is there and we can do it for next year, that may be something that's excellent, uh, but it is other process, so.
Neil, if we were to do, uh, an open call, what, what is the timeline for that process? Like just to say, just to land, show your interest?
That, we typically wouldn't take you two months to do that. I mean, to get drafted, circulated, received back and then report back to, to Council is at least a two month process. So one of the things I was thinking of as listening to this would be, you know, when we come back and present the strategy and give you that broader context, these gentlemen have come this far and for them, you, you act, you're basically saying, hey, we'd like to see some financial information, we want more details. Then to continue to do that work, that information can come forward probably at the same time as the strategy. So decisions can be, and at that point you can make your sole source decision, is that it'll be up to them to give you a compelling argument to, to do the sole source. If they can convince you, then, then they're off and running, all right? And that being part of the process coming forward.
Okay, so, um, I, I think when I'm here and I'm trying to, in my mind, sort of articulate a motion that would sort of keep it moving, however, sort of with some qualifiers, um, and I don't know if it's, uh, that staff continue to work with Monster Sport, uh, to further refine their idea and bring it back in concert with the real estate strategy in February. Is that fair enough?
Yeah. Mayor Heinzman, I'd like to go to our corporate officer just to make sure.
Just, yeah, and what we need to do in that as well is not just work with, um, Monster Sport, um, is we have to go to the province and find out whether or not subdivision is a reality on that. Well, there's lots of homework. There's a ton of that. And so I just don't, I don't want, I, I think we need to have a time, a check-in on the, um, timeline so that they know what our constraints are. The other thing is, Christine and I have to look into, um, the alternative approval process. So a commitment of this magnitude, twenty-five years with a liability commitment, um, requires eighty. So there's a whole bunch of homework that you guys, it's not in your world, it's not in your wheelhouse, so that we need to look at. And I, and then I think what it would be is, um, it may need to be adjusted, the timeline a little bit.
Yeah, we understand that if there's, if there's uncontrollable.
We're not agreeing any timelines, we're just saying that we see some potential in this project. We see some synergy with our master plan and we wanna, we wanna keep the ball rolling on it. So that was sort of a motion articulated, moved by Jason, seconded by Ted. I'll call the question, I'll leave it in favor. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you very much. Why don't we just take a three minute.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are on to item five one, budget workshop.
Good afternoon, Council.
Do I need my big book?
Nope.
I didn't get, um, any material. Oh, they didn't look at it.
Okay.
Are we missing some or?
No, we, they just got put down.
Thank you. We're gonna try and do a quick summary of where we're at and, uh, touch base on one or two quick points. We'll try and be as succinct as possible. We understand you're behind schedule, so we just need a couple of things from Council today and.
Thank you.
We'll start with Christina.
Christina Moore, Communications Manager, good afternoon, Council. Um, just an update on public engagement and public input into the budget process since we last met. Um, we've received more comments through our budget display boxes out at Brenham Park and here at Municipal Hall. We have, we've received, um, quite a number of comments through Brenham Park and it was quite a mixed bag of themes, so I'll just read them through for you. Um, none of them are attributed to, um, individuals, they were all anonymous. Um, regular commuter rail and tourism rail is, um, is requested or is asked to be looked at. Uh, move logging trucks off Sea to Skyway, uh, Sea to Sky Highway onto rail and barge. A second recreation center is needed, more aqua fitness times, uh, lower property taxes please. A better skateboard, a better skateboard park is asked for. Please stop wasting our money on rainbow crosswalks, blue painted trees and signs that we don't need. If you have a surplus, make better use of our money, please. We need electric car changing, sorry, electric car charging stations at the rec center. Uh, a second sheet of ice has been requested again, um, several times in this round. Uh, community gym and exercise equipment at Brenham Park has been referenced, a coffee shop at Brenham Park has been requested. Composting, um, an option to get soil, I assume here in, in the community. Um, glass recycling should happen curbside. Um, have all the development companies like Polygon contribute money to public service buildings like Brenham Park or a hospital. They are helping to bring density and should contribute to the strained services. Um, lots more, uh, comments about a second sheet of ice. Um, water slide at the pool, please. A purpose-built gymnastics facility is needed, weight room and exercise room with spin bikes, um, a bus to Brom and Alice Lake in the summer months, adult pool and exercise room and a three-meter diving board. We're all parts of the question.
Did you add how much of the whole is gone?
Um, there was a comment received here at Municipal Hall for more art funding, please. And, um, the, through the seniors, uh, sorry, through the fifty-five activity center, um, I believe one of the topics for discussion is, is, uh, that was raised about the, um, the seniors van will be discussed in more detail, so I'll leave that one. And, um, and that sums up our comments. So just up next in terms of the public engagement, uh, we do have a video that we're working on with Mayor Heinzman that will highlight some of the key projects, uh, that this budget is proposed to, um, fund, such as the landfill expansion, transit service expansion, um, an update on the Tantalus Fire Hall project, as well as CN crossing improvements. Uh, we're hoping to, uh, the plan is to shoot this Thursday and, uh, hoping to launch by late next week, uh, which should help us to, um, further drive interest in, uh, in the online tool and the public information meeting that I believe we'll be talking about today. And I just had one follow-up from the last meeting. Um, Councilor Elliott had asked a question about the, um, a comment that had been made at Brenham Park about sanitary bathrooms. So we did get some feedback or some, um, a response from our facilities managers and I can highlight some of that if you'd like. So the change rooms are checked, uh, once or twice today to pick up, sorry, let me start that again, please. The change rooms are checked once or twice per hour to pick up garbage and tidy and, and.
These are at the, uh, what?
At the aquatic center. Uh, to pick up garbage and tidy and, uh, and clean up minor spills. Um, any major issues are reported to maintenance. Um, the pool generator begins at four-thirty and addresses the change rooms and decks once the pool closes. Um, the practicality of cleaning midday has been looked at. Um, patron feedback is also monitored, um, especially as volume has grown and increased at the, at the pool. Uh, but to date, there hasn't, uh, been an issue that, the, the public feedback hasn't indicated that there is an issue and that the current maintenance service is not addressing the needs. And, uh, so at this point, there's nothing further, um, proposed beyond the current schedule.
So staff doesn't, doesn't think there's a need to increase the frequency?
Based on the feedback that has been received and some of the practicalities of trying to go in and clean change rooms midday when you've got male or female attendants needing to get into the change rooms and potentially hosing down floors when you have other, when you have patrons actually using the, um, the facilities. Uh, but the change rooms are checked once or twice an hour by the lifeguards and so any major issues will be reported to a maintenance person.
Have any questions about the public feedback? Don't see anything, please. Okay. I'm just gonna skip the next slide and go, uh, straight to the agenda since we're a little short on time. Uh, we're gonna, I've, um, distributed like the updated list, so we'll review that and then, uh, we'll talk about the next steps. Um, and we'll finish with some public input if there is and we'll wrap up with Council direction, um, on the next steps and dates. Um, the goals of today is, um, to make sure that Council is satisfied with, uh, the general fund budget, so we'll review the service level changes, uh, the special projects and the capital project list. Um, and then we'll get, uh, directions from Council on the next step for a public meeting date and the format and also if you have any key questions you would like to ask, uh, the public, um, on that date.
And if I can just jump in, um, obviously we understand that we want public. And if I can just jump in, obviously, we understand that we want public consultation before Council's ready to say that's, that's the budget. The point today is to make sure you're comfortable with where we're at and whether we're ready to go out and start talking to the public.
Okay. Thank you. So we're bringing back this slide that I think everybody's familiar with at, at this So this is like the total proposed draft revenue ask for 2018 at this time, and like I just want to make sure that we, sorry, that we're still receiving information, so this is not a final number, but the total revenue ask is at $27.8 million, or 6.9% higher than 2017. The special projects are totaling $1.6 million, and that's 3% lower than 2017. And of that, $506,000 will be funded by taxation revenue. This is $19,000, $19,000, yeah, dollar higher than last year.
What, where, where do I see that on that?
Well, I'm just like highlighting, so special project would be the sum of the $5.86 and the $19,000, and that's like the total funded by, funded by taxation. So that's 506.
486.
Yeah, 486.
Just a reminder, Council, of how this works. The 2018 base is just like, when we take out all last year's projects and everything, we would actually have a decline, right? So the next band is, your CFO being a pain in the butt and trying to get you to kind of remember that we want to ideally keep a project level, and so we're kind of letting you know what that project level would be. And then the fall, the bottom one tells you whether you're up or down from that project level. Now we are just basically where we need to be with special projects. The capital projects are a bit above, but I actually will talk to you more about why I like that. And then the service level changes are an increase over last year's.
So the 6.9 is the addition, 2.6 plus 1.8 plus .1 plus 2.8?
Exactly. It's sort of, it's the bottom, right now, we think you're sitting at about 6.9% revenue increase.
Yep. Okay. Done.
And what is existing and what is new? What are those two terms?
So with the existing, so the base was with all the projects out, the existing is if you were to maintain some of the same project envelopes as last year. So it's kind of the service level you maintained, you had last year. What does that look like this year to maintain that? So you have contractual and inflationary increases and things like that, or that if you were going to maintain the same level of service, there are some non-discretionary items, debt service, et cetera. Things you've already kind of technically committed to.
And the capital projects is what we're paying out of revenue?
Correct.
And that 6% is what we're targeting?
We're actually, that was last year's level. I would like you to target a little bit higher, and I think Anushka's going to get to that in a moment. Is that fair in the agenda? So I can talk to you more about that.
So, yeah, so what I'm talking about is like really like all, like all the information is on the list. I'm just giving you like a high level of information on this. So the total per capital project cost ask has decreased from last year by $1.1 million, but the funding by taxation has increased by 29% from last year. And that's like the four, so you have on the board there like the 1.5 million, that's last year's level, and the 4.62 is like your increase over last year. So that's like 29%. And the total taxation funding for all the capital project is $2 million.
So 29% of what?
So the 4.62 is 29% increase of taxation funding on the 1.5.
On the capital itself?
Yeah.
But so maybe we could just stay consistent with the tax requisition?
Yes.
It'll get confusing. So right now, basically, you're 2.5% higher than last year on your capital envelope, or sorry, 1.8% higher on your capital envelope. So you're impacting taxes by one, or revenue by 1.8% more than last year.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And then you've got like your service level, level changes are.
So, so can I just, so, so does that meet your goal of getting up to closer to seven?
It does.
Or see the goal?
It, it, no, it's just a little bit below where I'd love you to go, but I'm happy with it. I can, again, I'll chat with you a bit more about it. Unless you want to stop and head there right now. Council had asked us to explore accumulated surplus and what else we might do. So we were going to have a conversation around that.
Let's have a conversation right now.
Okay. So with the, we might need to just look at your capital project form then, which is in this, the last page of, page three of your.
Big one?
Yeah. So essentially, Council, to be at last year's level, you had put in $1.5 million of direct funding, the 1,570, 515 up there. That's direct taxation funding going to the capital plan. On top of that, we were putting about $1 million worth of capital reserve contribution. And we have been doing about 1% increase on that per year. And my lofty goal, based on the last time we did a 20-year financial plan, was to try and get us at 2 and 2, and essentially $4 million direct contributions over the next few years. So right now, as of coming out of last year, you were at about 2.5 of that $4 million goal. So what we normally do when we come back in, we propose that you increase your direct spending. So this year, we would have tried to get it from 1.57 up to about 1.7 to 5-ish, you know, try and bump it up a bit, and we would have tried to get your contribution to reserve up. Last time we met, we talked about the fact that maybe we didn't need to do the 1% increase on the contribution to reserve because you kind of had already got it with your direct taxation funding to capital. So in this regard, I think you actually, by going up the 1.6, you're kind of capturing what I was trying to do, which was get you up 2% in total capital investment. So I think you basically made it there with the capital plan the way it is. Whether or not it's going direct to reserve or going direct to your capital plan, it, the, the goal of getting your taxation level up so that you're funding capital at a set level, I think is being achieved. Clear as mud? Okay. So that's my goal. So I can provide you a couple of projects that I think might fit with accumulated surplus, but I wanted to couch that first. If you'd like to go there, then the following projects probably would make sense for accumulated surplus. I don't have all of them numbered here, but in looking at the capital plan this morning, the fiber conduit project is a one-time expenditure in, according to this capital plan, so it's $100,000. You could choose to take that to accumulated surplus. There is the RCMP exterior camera that needs more money than we thought it would need last year, so you could draw that from protective services reserve. And I'm sorry, I don't have a number for that.
38 grand.
I have the 38 grand, but I don't know what number it is.
43.
Number 43.
Line 43.
Yeah. The BP access, so Brennan Park accessibility project for 10,000, you might want to do that, and the bleachers for 44,000. And then there's the wheelchair enhancement for the van, another one-time, is about 35,000. I pretty well stayed away from anything else because a lot of the other items, we've been really lean, despite what it looks like, we've been really lean with our capital project this year, and it really is about rehab and ongoing maintenance. So, you know, trans, active transportation, we're, we're trying to maintain that budget for five years. Roads, we're trying to maintain those types of budgets every year, so they don't fit well with accumulated surplus years. So those are a couple of the projects that I will throw your way as being, they're kind of one-time, we don't have them have recurring through the plan. They might be subject, good subjects for accumulated surplus.
Any questions at this point? What we might do is bring the letter from the president of the PAC in the conversation to, as part of the D-1 surplus conversation.
Okay.
So just wanted to, open up those minutes to that, ask those to that. Any questions at this point about these specific projects?
Just to summarize, so I got line 50, which is the Brennan Park Arena bleacher heaters. And that was 44. And I got line 43, RCMP exterior camera upgrade. I got line 34, which is a fiber conduit, 100,000. And I got line 30, the wheelchair lift, which is 35,000. Was there another one?
There was some access as well, 10,000.
27.
27?
Yeah.
What's the total of that?
Oh, okay.
So, sorry, I didn't do a total for you, but I'll get to that for you in half a moment.
It's about 250.
Why don't we just quickly have a bit of a discussion of those, this proposal at Squamish Elementary School, see if it comes started the conversation or not. As you know, we got a letter prior to the development permit last week, I guess it was, about this proposal that the parents at the elementary school were trying to do to help, I think the way they articulated to me was mitigate the impact, particularly with this construction, also provide an amenity for the community that's going to be mostly impacted by this development. You know, we look back on the history of this development and essentially where we got today was because it was an industrial site and we ended up rezoning it to avoid having industrial use on that site. And so it didn't go through sort of a normal rezoning process whereby a developer would offer an amenity. So we never really got amenity on this rezoning. And so I'm certainly open to Council considering, I think particularly if it comes through accumulated surplus, helping to fund this project. And what I like about it is it moves the kids into a play area that's on the opposite side of the school, away from the construction zone. And also I see it as obviously a way to really engage the kids in helping define their future at that site and what that site might look like. So I sort of see there's a value added there. But obviously, it's up to Council to consider this. I know they do have about $40,000 funding from, it's the Blackwell Foundation, and I think they're hoping the developer will show some goodwill and help contribute as well. But they have, through a letter, asked us to consider helping fund this. Council, hurry, come forward.
Yeah. And as, you know, as far as the construction and the kids being around this construction, there's going to be a six-foot fence around that whole thing. And they'll, if there's any traffic in and out, which would be very rare until they're pouring concrete or something, they'll have a flight or something. You know, myself, I have absolutely zero concerns about safety. And then, once the thing's built, it's going to have, is it 6,000 square foot daycare right there, right beside that little park? And, yeah, I don't know if we want to move that little park.
It'll be parked and moving.
Just a new play area on the other side?
Yeah. And my understanding is somewhere naturalized play area, they want to do edible gardens. It's not in bushes.
All right. Hang on, I thought it was moved, the existing one, and I thought.
Doug?
Thanks. So I have two problems with this. I don't think we owe the school district anything as a result of this rezoning. I mean, it was next to industrial land for who knows how long, and this is arguably a much better use of it. But I have problems putting money into the school district budget because we have our own budget constraints and they have their budget, and from what I saw in the report or the letter, there was no indication of school board contribution to this project. The second problem I have is, I understood from, and I think it came out of one of the reports in the, not the rezoning, the DP application, that the expansion plans for Squamish Elementary would go towards that side. And while that's not imminent, I can only guess, given the fact that, that the number of children has increased even faster than the school district thought when we had this discussion a year ago, that it's probably sooner than it might have been a couple of years ago. And so that would take out this garden anyway, so we'd kind of lose it. So I don't think we want to be putting, we put money into our playgrounds, recreation facilities, et cetera, all over the district. I'm not sure we have to be putting a lot to school district property.
And just, my understanding is that the PAC has, that the school district has, is supporting the PAC in this, so whatever plans the school district has for expansion, this fits into their, that's, that's what I understand. So just wanted to, that obviously the school district would have to approve this. Can I do that again? No. I saw a handover here. No.
I think I have the same concerns as Doug, I'm a bit concerned that it's a big ask and that the school board is not budgeting for this. They have their own constraints, but we have ours. But I think each year now, we put a bit of two-week contingency into the grant needs. I guess that's a question for Sarah.
So through the mayor, we're just maintaining the same contingency that we ever have for the general fund, but yes, it often funds our grant need.
So, I mean, this seems to be something that would come through grant need and we contribute a portion of it, but not tremendous amount. But with school board property, I'm a bit uncomfortable with that.
Anyone else? Yeah, I, I have less of a concern about it being school board property. I think obviously, any kid is going to be able to use this, but I think if we can help move the kids away from the parking area and move them onto the other side of the school, I think that's a helpful thing, particularly because we did rezon this land. We did create this new use there. So I'm, I'm open to it, I'm certainly open to a different amount. I think this is certainly a one-off project that would qualify under community service at Council Choice Building. Anyway, so I'm, I'm absolutely open to Council.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we, we did rezon the property and we had to open the house and, you know, we did follow the process, and nobody came up to the meeting to complain. Well, I don't think anyone came up to the matter. Anyway, I, I, I don't feel so one-represented toward this school district.
This is not the school district?
I, well, it's putting the structure on, and, you know, if there was, if they were, if we were matching them dollar for dollar, perhaps, but, I don't know. It's just I don't feel so one-represented by it.
Yeah, just, my understanding is they, they've got $41,000 already. They're asking, they're looking for other sources of funding. They're asking us to fund 50, that's what their request is. Jason?
It's a new project and I don't support district funding.
Anyone else? Seems we all have my own on this one. Okay.
I know how you feel.
All right. So we have some projects that have exposed, that's in the accumulated surplus.
227.
227. 227, that's much. If my math is, if my mental math is right, like not having my adding machine.
Yep, Doug?
And at this stage, right, you're on the, I kind of get sort of attached to where we are in the overall benchmark tax rate. Do you have an update on that? This is, that number is just under 1% of taxation, give or take.
Which number are you looking at?
227. So we're taking 227 out of the budget, which, all else being equal, would reduce it by...
Probably that .8, so it would probably bring the capital down by one, two, about one-ish, thinking. Hopefully, that's pretty close in my map. So, you know, you're dragging it down probably about .8.
But, but just on the general benchmark taxation, do we have an update on that?
Certainly, if, if I, I just used this number up that you're seeing, the 6.9% for now. It looks to me like that is about an effective tax increase for an existing, existing assessment base of about 3.37%.
3.37?
Did that one go up? Maybe I missed it. Maybe I missed it.
Well, we, I think we're continually updating our background information because we're finding out more. We know now what our insurance rates for 2018 will be. We're knowing now what there's some, what our grant needs are. So we're trying to kind of keep the model itself in behind the scenes with the existing up-to-date, so.
So this isn't an up-to-date number here?
Yes, it's up-to-date. I think, remember there's the...
This is 3.34.
Right. So it was... Just a reminder, there's a difference between our change in revenue and our change in potential taxation. So that, I believe, is the change in revenue?
Yeah.
Right? So it's taking the 2.6% and, so what is it for the existing? Can you explain your numbers a little bit?
Okay, so if through the mayor, we got a very last-minute update right before the meeting. So I updated this model and what Christine just stated, the 3.37 does include the $5,000. And like, I literally got that update at 12:30. So the 3.34 does not include the $5,000. So the last, like, the greatest, and we just wanted to bring in like the latest, greatest number here.
Gotcha. So you're just basically saying the existing and the new didn't get updated when you...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So rushing to get here.
But when I asked the question about the new and existing, that was basic expenses, that wasn't tax rates.
But I think what Anushka's trying to do on the bottom there perhaps is show you the net effect that's impacting the taxpayer versus the existing taxpayer versus the new assessment base. So just kind of breaking it down between those two. So if we know that 6.9% is the revenue increase, how is that being shared? So we're using kind of a blend of the taxation, effective taxation impact, and then we're taking 6.9 less that to get you the 3.52, which is hitting onto the new base. So the revenue needs to go up. How that's being portioned across new houses and old?
So that includes the non-market change in the tax?
Basically, the existing is the, or the new is the non-market piece. Clear as mud?
Yep. No, I think I got it this time.
It's complicated.
Yeah, I guess I was different last time.
But what Anushka's saying is I've just come up with a new number of 3.37 and 3.52. And she had 3.34 and 3.55 because she, in her efforts to get in here with the timely information, she hadn't had a chance to rerun it through the tax model.
So I'll move that, it's going to move that these be funded by accumulated surplus. And so just for clarity, I'm moving line item 27, and this is from the page today. Line item 30, line item 34, line item 43, and line item 50 be funded, for a total of $227,000, be funded from accumulated surplus.
And for clarity, may I have number 43 out of Protective Services Provision instead?
Yeah, it was, did I miss that one?
It's in your list of accumulated surplus. It's a subtle difference. It's all accumulated surplus, but one is designated right now and one is un designated.
Okay. Forty-three from Protective Services Reserve.
Moved by council, everybody. Seconded by council, Kent. I'll call the question, I'll lose in favor. Those carries. I'm going to throw a motion up there and if it gets seconded, I'll speak. But I move that we fund $25,000 for the project at Squamish Elementary School as a grant need funded through accumulated surplus. Do you have a second? Nope.
Just trying.
I could give you that one.
We've always spoken for it, so.
They're closest.
Okay. And those are, those three things there. And now, Anushka, do you just want council to, if there are any questions about this list?
Yep. Are you council comfortable with this list and like to go forward to the public meeting?
Okay, so let's go through this list. Counselor Elliott?
I'm actually going to go back just for a second, uh, to the Squamish Community Foundation. When we say matching, so people are going to apply for 500, are we then going to match and make it 1,000? Or are we just contributing to the overall pot of money available for $500?
I think we can work out those details.
Yes, if you, if you will leave us that, because administratively, obviously, we don't want to be cutting a check every week for...
No, it would go to the community foundation.
Yeah.
And they would allow them to dole out more of them.
I just want to make sure that it's simple.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that that does beg the question, do I dole them out 5,000 to start and then they come back and ask me for the other five? Or...
Let's work that out with them.
Okay.
For this budget decision, we don't necessarily...
Fair enough.
Okay. Otherwise, they don't make questions. Any questions about here? Peter?
On line 40, the baseball dugout replacement. Fresh my memory, but I think I recall him saying something about viability there that was falling apart or something like that.
Yes, that, my understanding through the mayor is that dugout is pretty much past. If we don't replace it, then we should probably remove it.
Yeah. Because baseball season's coming up and we get a bunch of users in there and something happens, the kids or adults or whatever. So that's fine.
And that's, that's a portion of over three years? Three, three years? Am I doing that right?
I think it was more than one to replace.
Just 14,000 per year.
I believe it's more than one to replace, so it must be...
Oh, okay, so it's, and we are obviously replacing the worst numbers.
Yes, we'll deal with the safety concerns, Ms. Minister.
Any other questions in this list? Everyone okay for this list to go out to the public for the next round of engagement? Do you need a motion without a question? Or why don't we go through these things and then if you need a motion to provide clarity, we'll put motion forward? Okay. And I'm hoping we can do this really quickly.
Okay, so council is comfortable with us going to the public meeting on January 30th?
Yes. January 30th?
No.
Yeah, so it'd be the fifth Tuesday, or the fifth Tuesday of January.
And our sacred fifth Tuesday, if you're taking it in mind.
Well, it's up to council. We had tentatively budgeted, scheduled it for that timeframe.
You took the first one off, I think.
Was council wanting to change the format from last year?
You might intermind.
Last year, yeah, last year we had it in here around...
Like a circle, yeah.
The only thing I would think, the mic system was a pain in the butt last year. And so if we could have more than one mic and maybe wireless, I don't know what we have capacity for, but it was a pain to do that, if I remember correctly. Any other, I mean, totally open to different formatting ideas. These are always challenging, but...
So I guess for clarity, would you like staff to start out with a presentation, five-minute, 10-minute, and then go into roundtable? Or do you just want to do some pre-communication and come into roundtable?
I think a short presentation, highlight reel, I think. Any other, anyone disagree with that? But it shouldn't...
Keep it, yeah, we want to get into the two-way conversation.
Well, one of the things that I was wondering about, and this came to mind the other night at the OCP meeting, is that sometimes people have to wait for everyone to ask their questions to get to the question they want to ask. So one thing I was wondering, if we did a short presentation. And I know we want to stream all this live, but then we give people a chance to just talk to staff and talk about their specific items. And then if they have any leftover questions, they can, we have an open Q and A. But I'm just trying to make it efficient for everybody.
Yeah, I know, there's pros and cons to that. I don't know what you're trying to do, but at the same time, I guess people can always stick around. If they want their question asked in the public with the camera going, they can stay and ask that question.
Well, maybe there's two parts to it. There's the drop-by and ask staff, and then there's the sit-down, formal presentation, ask council questions. Because we're going to defer to staff most of the time, that's...
Yeah. Yeah, that's an interesting idea. Have a bit of a distance, open house, come ask questions. And then have sort of the formal videotaped part where we have, you know, a 15-minute presentation and open question period from whoever's there.
So my only concern with that is usually the pre-information helps with people to get context and understand the budget. So I'd probably prefer to see a little bit of a Q and A. Is it, would it be comfortable in the roundtable whether staff or council answer? Is that of concern to council, if that's what you're trying to achieve is?
Yeah, I think you kind of have to read it a bit. If it's a technical question, it would be a staff. If it's more of a politically driven question, priorities question, then that's...
That's my concern, yes.
Counsel, and at this point, it's really about listening to the comment too and deliberating on that and evaluating it on the budget, with regard to budget. So I'm not as worried about that. You can kind of tell the type of question that's asked, where the...
Well, I think that staff is always available to answer questions. Someone could call me tomorrow, and they sometimes do, and we're happy to answer that. And I think, I think the point of this is they want to know that council's hearing them because council's ultimately making the decisions. So that would just be my caveat, is it's probably more important that they see that process, that council is listening and then taking that information directly and using it to make a decision.
Well, I kind of like council, its idea that maybe there's a drop-in for an hour beforehand. People might get a really quick clarification and be fine with it or... And then, like, maybe that starts at 6:00 and then at 7:00, we start the more formalized Q and A with the presentation. Where do you want us to, do you want to...
Does council have any key question you want to ask the public? Or are we just like sticking with this?
So we did our survey, so that's kind of where we probably handled any things. But if there's any burning questions out there that we want to put out before, then let us know. Otherwise, we'll...
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the questions we seem to get, you know, relate to actually what the assessment did. And I'm just wondering, I was looking through the media reports and I didn't see any indication for Squamish with the average increase in the assessment was. So the people might know if they're above or below the average, but the possible effects would be on...
You people make the news media, it's because people go crazy. So maybe it's good news that we didn't make a media this year.
Yeah.
Some properties did receive a notice directly from BC Assessment if they were heavily impacted. So BC Assessment would have already alerted them that they're probably higher than the norm.
Well, but that's not just a little bit, though. That's, I don't know what the threshold is before you get a notice, but it's quite a significant one. I mean, my assessment went up, I don't know, 38% last year and I didn't get a notice. So, but the average went up about 38%, I think. So I was just curious if we had any sort of idea what the average assessment went up in Squamish this year?
Well, over all, all of the classes, we had about a 3.6% non-market change and the rest of it, about 10.9, I want to say, was market influences. Now, that changed, so our condo owners were hit a little bit harder. I think it was closer to 14% in terms of market change. So they did find there was more pressure on the condominiums and densified multifamily than there was on the single families.
Maybe we should get that information.
Sure. Do you want us to talk about it a little bit as part of this?
Might come out, and particularly more the residential, you know, single family versus detached, or attached, right?
Karen?
One suggestion, just building on council or his comments is, I think BC Assessment did a video on their website last year to explain. And so maybe with the mayor's video, we also put out that video so people understand that connection between revenue ask and tax and assessment.
And any other burning questions? Christine Yawna?
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. Just to mention, last year, a little bit later than this, once we actually had the tax rates, but we did have a calculator on our website that you could put in your assessment number and get the tax estimate. And that video was really useful for us as well. We linked to it from our site. So we'll certainly, we'll use those resources again.
But I would rather not put the tax calculator up right now, council. We don't know the implications of court yet and we don't, we're just not...
Well, and we actually have to sort of have a tax rate byline in front for people to plug in a number. We don't know what that number is yet, so.
Yeah.
We won't have that piece yet.
Thanks.
In later.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Just on that point, is that scheduled up in here for that discussion about the various rates?
So we will wait until the completed roll goes. So the budget schedule reflects us actually bringing this financial plan to resolution as per discussions with council previously. So we would bring this, the bylaws, in February and early March. I think we're talking about those dates. And then we get the completed roll in April. And so in April, we would come back to you to talk about rate setting. At that point, I've made a commitment to council that if there's something really off the rails we could not have foreseen, that we would have to amend the financial plan if they were truly concerned about it. But that allows us to proceed with our 2018 capital plans, et cetera.
So it's after August?
Okay. And everyone's okay with this schedule? Then I went up here on the sixth.
So the sixth is a bit of a, we're kind of optimistic that we're hoping the public meeting goes well. So if it's really substantial, then we might need a little more time to prepare. But we were really hoping to get back in with council, but it's still fresh with everybody, you know, feedback we got. And if there's any additional tweaks, then just allow us a little more time to get ready for the agenda for the 20th.
Okay. But ultimately, we're hoping to have the byline part of us for adoption, a consideration of adoption for the week, for the week.
February 20th, actually, first three readings.
For the...
If everything goes well, and then adoption also.
Yeah. Okay. Everyone's okay with that? Okay. Anything else? We good with budget?
For now.
All right. Next, Community Foundation. This was a referral, I kind of got a little lost. This was a referral from council. Squamish Community Foundation was in here talking about their, what do they call it, program? The Neighborhood...
It was a joint neighborhood, it was a neighborhood small group.
And these are $500, I think up to $500 grants for neighbors to connect. They can be, I think, one of them went to the Ampleton Park and one of them went to a neighborhood that wanted to have a gathering for people to get to know each other. And council wanted it referred to budget to consider possibly helping, augmenting that program, allowing the foundation to actually access more money through a bit of a matching grant program. And so it was referred to council to deliberate that through the budget.
Was there a specific add?
I think, I think it was up to $10,000, was that in the motion?
There was a motion from the November 28th committee meeting, I believe, where council tentatively thought about maybe $5,000 to match whatever came from the community. Does that sound great, Rob?
So, and that's not currently in the budget, huh?
We just put it in today. That's one of those, those numbers were a little low because, yeah.
So I guess we're looking for council's support for that officially?
Sorry, what did you put in?
$5,000.
Done?
Well, I was going to move $10,000.
I was going to move $10,000.
I thought it was kind of a really deep program. And so I'll, that amount will be increased to $10,000.
Is there a second or...
There'll be.
And it allows council leadership to actually make more, so. Counselor Elliott?
Is this not a grant need or is it something else?
It's community enhancement grants, but of course, our grant need program impacts taxation, so we put it in them.
So it's there, that's where it's living.
$5,000 is in the, in the community enhancement grants right now and we're going to up it to $5,000 more.
Yeah. And my understanding too, I mean, if they don't, it would be matching. So let's say in three, it would be 20 projects. If they only get 10, we'd only spend 5. It's a matching grant program. You're not here to take all this money. It's to help incentivize more.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I'll call the question, I'll lose in favor. Pose, motion carries.
Okay. So everybody's okay with the lists? Or do you want to have a few minutes to read the lists or...
Just make sure that they're...
So maybe while this resets for five minutes, allow council to go through these.
Okay, so they're still the same as the reference number. I've been changed like throughout like the entire budget process. And I've also included notes on the changes that have been done throughout like the past two months.
Mayor Heisman, too, I understand that you had wanted a bit more information around the LED lights. We do have Ian here. Would you like that before we make a final decision on this?
Yeah, actually, yeah, let's do that now. Welcome in.
So Mayor Heisman, hi. My name's Ian Larkin. I'm the electrical supervisor. Do they have this?
Yes.
So we just created a basic, what do they look like for just the overhead fixtures to be replaced on a one, two, or 10-year program? And on these shoes here too, we have basically the return on investment on all three, like highlighted in orange. But I would like to go to the 10-year plan.
Which one, which one?
Be the final page. So our, our kind of recommendation would be to continue on this 10-year program and not move forward on a one or two-year program. At, at this stage anyway, we still would like to get a complete inventory of all of our lights that are out there, all the wattages, exactly have, exact costs on, on everything and provide that perhaps the next budget for 2019.
So.
So council, I think the three different forms here indicate when the payback might be on doing these programs based on the hydro cost that I believe council had asked for last time.
And these are based on today's hydro rates or anticipated head rates?
Today and, and anticipated as well.
And so I believe that Mr. Larkin here has scenarios. If we did the whole program today, it would cost us in 2018, $234,000.
Yes.
And if we were to do it over a two-year span, you could invest about $117,304 for two years. And then the plan that was originally proposed by staff was the 10-year plan of $27,000. And I believe what staff is asking is that we carry on with the 10-year plan this year. It just gives them a chance, opportunity to do all the inventory. And then in 2019, if we think the more aggressive approach is required, we'd like to come back to you then.
So, so if I'm getting this right, the payback is essentially 2021, a four-year?
The amount, the shorter the timeline, the more money you're getting back earlier on in that. But it all starts to pan out or pencil out in 2021. It's just you get more money back sooner if you.
Do it all at once.
Yeah, there's a capacity issue to do it all at once and there's an understanding issue that says we're not exactly sure of what we've got. So there's a bit of a risk if we went out and said, do it all now, that it might be a bit, that it might be higher than 234 because there's stuff out there that we're really not that sure of what we've got.
I know council prior mentioned it last time. A lot of these lighting companies want, you know, want this business. They realize municipalities are understanding, there's a really good ROI on this. I mean, four years is so unheard of in ROI world. And that they are, they are prepared to come and do a lot of analysis for municipalities. How comprehensive of your conversations been with Phillipses and the, whomever it is?
What's funny, so we picked the, I went with the general electric light fixture. Which I didn't bring one here if you guys wanted to see it.
We like that.
But basically, I picked up the, we had engineering service help us with the lighting design on one of our intersections and the GE was the only one that really actually made an impact. Of the five, there's five different companies that.
Is it heavy?
It's, it's.
It's one half, but it's not a one half.
So basically, you see on the bottom side over there, there's just the two bright diodes. These ones are different from the other ones where these have the reflective shield that shoots the light out of there.
You pray that you buy it.
And they're really, they're really simple to switch out, and so it really helps with the costs.
The diodes you're referring to is right here, these two?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what produces the light?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's really fantastic.
And is this similar to the ones that we have in the Cleveland intersection there at Hunter Place?
Yes, the ones in the Cleveland intersection at Hunter Place, they're, I put a higher wattage ones there. So they have the same thing like this, but they just have, they have a double kind of array of type things. Four instead of two.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, I kind of was looking at the light when you were talking about.
Right, so I, yeah, I'll get back to what I was just saying. It was the, there's many different companies out there selling the lights, but we've gone out and through the provincial procurement program and we've signed up for that and so we're getting the same rate as all the other municipalities. And we've picked it based on the light spread, what would be best for us. And we're buying them all ourselves, we're not buying them for contractors, we're buying them with a block heat in, so we're actually saving significantly money.
But they don't necessarily say, look them up and do a once around?
No, I haven't, no.
You know, like, if I can just follow up on that, the most important thing to me is if you go down Mountford Road, past Canadian Tire.
Yes.
At nighttime, you can barely know there's lights on.
Heading towards the golf course there?
Yeah. I mean, it's just terrible. And on a rainy night, if you're turning, or I turn, I mean, you can't just turn the corner. You have to come to a full stop and almost open your window to make sure there's no people walking along.
Agreed.
So, I mean, really, if we're going to do, if we're going to follow our 10-year plan without doing some kind of research, how would we hit all those really dark, heavily traveled pedestrian railways and do that first?
So, so I think there's two pieces that there's the retrofit program and there's the augmentation program.
Yeah, so these are completely, just fixing what we, just replacing what we have in stock, like what we have.
As opposed to.
Adding new.
Bettering, that's a different program.
Oh, oh, I like, I like the digital program.
But that's what we're talking about right now. That's it.
We're talking about do it all for 280,000 or stretch it all over 10 years.
Of replacing our existing, hello blah blah.
Fixtures, basically, on top of the big Cobra.
The ROI is four years.
Yeah, well, if it's safety's up nose, I mean, we're talking 200 things about, rather have safety.
But it's not, that's not the debate right now. Ironically, I mean, in four years, we're going to be saving a lot of money.
Yes.
Year over year after year. We take that money and put it into safety. Like, we're talking about the ROI on a retrofit program, not on a coppering that's a lighting roads. That's a whole other program. This is the retrofit what we have because the return on investment is four years and then the subsequent savings.
Right.
After four years is exponential.
Exactly.
As it goes on. So that's what we're talking about here, not the other. It's not under R.
But as you, you know, if you take this year to sort of really take stock of what we have, we can identify, we can increase the wattage on some of the lights that we're really done as we replace the heads or no, right? Like, so we can do a bit of what council prior is talking about.
And, and that, on our, the streets that we have?
On the, on the ones we have, right?
Exactly.
So, so that's why we can put brighter lamps when it gets replaced.
Yeah, it'll be, the ones that we do replace, they will be, it's a better light quality all around. It's brighter, it's better quality. It's, you can actually see.
People.
See people. But we still live in, you know, like in the dark rainy nights in Squamish. So, I mean, there was, yeah, we can't light up the whole world. It's right.
Christine, on something that gives us such a short return on investment, could you even just go to a short-term loan on something like that?
You, you could. It's a little arguable because each one of these units, they may be not capital, it might be just a replacement program. So we can really only borrow for.
Even shorter.
Capital, like tangible capital assets that we've set up. So we prefer not to borrow on these types of small, or smaller part replacement type scenarios. You probably could, but.
How long do these light units last?
They're rated for 100,000 hours. So we're looking at about, it's roughly like 22, 23 years or so.
See, what I'm saying is we're making an investment, short-term, we, we don't want to borrow for 20 years on something that is paying itself off and you keep paying it for 20 years. Short-term loan, you hit off in four years and then you're just cutting your costs in the future.
Right, so I think that, I mean, it's a good point, but I think you could.
But it is, something only happens once every 22 years.
Yes.
In year.
So, yes. So my preference would be that you don't do this type of program by borrowing, ideally.
Even.
But even short-term borrowing, it's still, and you would have to rerun these ROIs for interest rates because that's not in here right now. We're assuming it's a full, like an investment without a debt service charge on top of it. It would still be a relatively similar payback period. I think what council needs to decide is how quickly you want your savings. That's what, where the difference is. You get, you know, more extreme savings on doing it all right now. We're doing it over two. But what I keep hearing from staff is they prefer to do the inventory first and regroup.
I agree, you don't have to either.
Yeah, regroup it on 2019.
Yeah. I, I've heard that. I'm trying to understand those implications. We hear what staff wants to do, absolutely. Thank you. I'll move on to that. Any other questions?
So then, on forming three lights suppliers and seeing how to squamish to a surprise on redoing that again.
Right.
We don't do anything, we just wait for their prices.
Gary, you want to give that?
Just want to also note that this is just on the 680 or so that are our lights. There's probably an equivalent number of lights that B C Hydro has as well.
So on some streets Hydro owns them, some streets we own them?
Correct, yeah.
Everything with the wood and hole, B C Hydro owns.
And there are about 300 decorative lights which are not in this. Of course, they're substantially.
Does Hydro bring, Hydro's using LED?
Hydro's using high-pressure sodium. So those that are.
But they're paying for those lights.
We're paying for these.
Are you flat unit rate, per unit?
Okay, well, 600. I mean, I just don't know why we're doing the inventory on our 600 lights or is the inventory on there?
Out on the lights, we have 682 plus the deputy.
We know how many lights we want.
Yeah, we just, we have a, we have a theoretical number, which we want to just make sure we have all those numbers.
I know if it was my house.
Right.
My wife would make me do them all. Because it's a savings.
I think it's a powerful business this year. It's very convincing. I think from, for me, if we, we did sort of preparatory year this year, I was going to say it was last year, but it wasn't. And we do it all next year, that return on investment is very quick. And it's not just the return on investment, it's the savings subsequently after that that's cumulative.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So I'd rather see us do this 10-year plan later and I guess I'm having trouble understanding why it takes a year to do the analysis and how, and there are companies out there that probably do it for us. I, I'm just trying to understand that piece of it. And if it, if it takes four months and we start the retrofit program in September, like I'm just trying to understand why we have to wait 12 months.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I haven't gone out to do, I was doing this all as project in-house. Yeah, we could go out and get a contractor to do it for us.
Well, people do it for free because they love business.
Right, but the prices that we're getting the light fixtures for, they're not offered to the general contractor.
Right.
Those prices, so that's why we're, it is probably two of them. Yeah.
Jason?
Okay, what I'm just trying to understand what council prior was saying is my understanding what council prior was saying is that the manufacturers come and present at U B C M or F C M. And it's the manufacturer that offers to come do an audit and say, okay, you've got this many lights with our product, this is what you get and this is what we would charge you and will arrange for, you know, turnkey kind of operation. If that is indeed what is available, then I'm wondering if we just, if staff can, you know, obviously, we've done some internal stuff, so we have some, a good comparison baseline numbers, but if there are other contractors out there who, that's what I'm expecting, is a free audit and then a quote. I don't, I don't see why we would do that, but maybe that's oversimplified.
Yeah.
I don't know, Ian, if, the question I've dealt with on that is the audit's free, provided you sign some sort of understanding that the work following is going, which is.
I get that with the conversations. At U B C M, there's three or four light suppliers, there's solar assist, I mean, there's just all the latest, the greatest in street lighting for sure. But I'm sure, I, I do agree with you that the earlier we do them, the faster we have our savings and.
You don't often get a four-year ROI on municipal stock.
Right, first.
And I, I would, like, I can't see how a company would come and just say, well, I'll do the audit if you buy my product. They're going to do the audit and competitive with this product. They'll all come and do the audit and put your, go to your. They want your business. I have Susan and Peter and Karen.
Thanks. There's a lot of standing points that we made about like doing residential, but it's a district with capacity issues of being, of sending staff out to change all the lamps a month and.
Staff doesn't change the lamps.
So the companies are going to go out and.
We have, we pay the labor contractors to do that.
So, okay, so there's no capacity issue and it's with, and the difference is the, the time of return? So that's if there's, if there's no, if you're saying that there's no capacity issue, I would go with doing the faster.
You might want to clarify that.
So capacity, like, so storage, places to store these lights is an issue and then just the time and managing the project along with.
That's what I meant, staff, I'm telling you.
Yeah, that's why we really do it.
But if we can get an audit, that, if we can look into that, I'd be interested. Before, I would agree to anything. I'd want to see if we could get an audit done for free, if that's possible, on the exact plan that has been chosen.
Peter and Karen.
Well, just to throw, just to, for devil's advocate, though, I think that if, if these guys were to come up and do the audits for free, and I kind of agree with Gary, I think they would want some kind of contractual agreement in place because otherwise municipalities all over, everywhere would be just saying, well, come on and give us your free audit and okay, great, thanks for that and here we go and generalize that somewhere and not provide them with the business.
Right.
We would take advantage of that side of it and these guys would not be getting 5% of the business that they're hoping to get.
I think we're hypothesizing or something.
Yeah, we may be, but I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate on that side.
Karen.
Okay, so I wanted to clarify something. I think, Ian, what you said is that because we're part of the provincial procurement program, we're getting a better price on these lamps than any contractor who's offering a free audit could get.
Yes, that's my understanding, is so the province goes out and you go to the best prices from the companies and then they're not, contractors don't get the same price. So the talk, when the contractors do save, get the same lights that we're showing you around there and then they also put their markup on as well. So they, they get a higher price and then they'll put that markup on as well.
Another question is, as you put these LEDs in, are you learning about what is working and what doesn't work for different intersections and types of roads?
Right, so the only, the 22 intersection we've done so far, like that Pemberton and Cleveland and Buckley and Cleveland, just just been a massive improvement in those ones there. So, but the more you get along with it, the older ones you get for sure.
When Bob was here last time, he said, in having a longer, not a long, maybe not 10 years, but the price of these lamps keeps coming down because the technology improves it cheaper, is that a fair statement that?
It's a, it's a very fair statement. So the prices, we were talking about LED streetlights like five years ago and they've been, they've come down a long way. And in fact, I think the prices of high-pressure sodium and metal halide lights are going up because of the lack of purchasing. And some of the decorative lights as well that we have around town, they don't even make a M H I D version of them anymore, they only make LEDs anymore. So that's a fair, for sure, first statement.
But is it fair to say though, that the, the, the price has gone down so much that there's so much compression at this end, they're not, they're not going to, like if they're at 300 or 400 a unit now, they're not going to go down to 10,000.
Very, very, yeah, exactly.
So your ROI is actually starting to.
Yeah, exactly. We could be.
Overcome that real diversion, key order.
Can I?
Yeah.
That's right.
And the mayor asked the question, how long does an inventory take?
Just along with my regular duties, that's why I didn't want to have a question for this budget time, but we thought we could get more information and not just with inventory, but just seeing how things going and then come back to the better proposal for the next budget season.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight that, you know, the change in hydro rates is assumed to be about 5% a year, which, is that right?
That's, that's, yeah, that's what that.
5%, so, and just saying that, you know, that may be.
Conservative.
Yeah, or not conservative, like, I think we're going to get slammed in the next few years, like, we're going to.
Well, the conservative investment can be way more, yeah.
I mean, that's, something has to pay for that sightsee, so, you know, that's, and they're going to go after non-residential repairs, like guaranteeing, so we got to kind of do it faster, I don't know. And I just, anecdotally, you know, from what I see in other municipalities, like Burnaby and Vancouver, like, they've been very aggressive with replacing a lot of their lighting, so I'm assuming that they're doing it for, you know, cost-conscious reasons.
And this doesn't, this, we haven't evaluated the carbon saving on this either, too, in terms of an added value to the project?
Yeah, the, the.
If it could be on there, I have that chance to.
It's not significant at all.
Okay.
Because we live in a B C Hydro, hydroelectric sphere.
Okay, I want to wrap this up. Go ahead, Doug.
That's what I was talking about. So I was thinking of, I'm sort of inclined to leave it as is for this year, let staff gather the information they want, but next year's budget, come back with something like a three-year proposal to do it in a relatively aggressive state. And I think that's a compromise, because I think you can go too far one way or the other. Because there are other issues here besides just the numbers, and so I think we want to make sure we do it all right. So I will make a motion to that effect, first of all, that the budget item for this year remain the same, which I believe is that 27,000 over, and that staff be directed to bring to the next budget discussion next year options for doing this program with a balance of the program in three years.
Is there a second? My counsel's compliment. I'm going to speak against that. I think that's way too conservative. I would like to see us essentially commit to doing it in two years. If this predominantly, the majority of this year is doing our due diligence and getting our numbers and all that, with some monies to initiate the program this year and have it completed in the 2019 budget cycle. The ROI in this is so significant, and I think conservative, that it's absolutely worth the investment to do it today. And it's not just the ROI, it's the actual savings down the road, and they're not insignificant numbers every year. $77,000 a year after year four, and if we do it sooner, it actually is higher than that. So these are really impressive numbers in terms of ROI and future-focused savings, and I think they're just better quality away. There's a whole bunch of different reasons. And we can improve some of these areas that are deficient now right away. I'd like to see us wrap this up, and I think there are programs out there with these lighting companies to make these things happen in quite quick order, so we might not have kind of explored those yet, but I think if we sort of give it a two-year timeframe, take half of this year to do our due diligence, and then work on it on a two-year program, we can have this done in 2019, and then we see the savings thereafter, so. I'm going to speak against those. Ted.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, the savings and everything, and I pulled up one company here and possibly buying through the province, we're going to have the savings and all that, but I don't know that. But then how can we help outdoor building lighting, parking lot lighting, commercial area lighting, park lighting, clothing brick lighting, I mean, all those lights we need up, and I would like to be really aggressive on it. And just, you know, if there is a company out there that's going to, or two or three that will give us quotes, do them all, the whole nine yards.
You're saying everything, building lighting, exterior lighting.
Yeah, but yes, there's a new council coming next year. I won't be on council next year, so.
Getting up now.
Yeah, no, but, you know, sometimes if there's a few new people, then you got to go through the whole thing again and follow up again. It's something.
Ian, one quick question. To actually do an audit, if you were to just hire someone to do an audit, how much would that cost? If you had to hire them, I'm not saying we do.
I don't have a number, sorry.
Okay. Karen, Peter.
I'm supportive of this motion only because I think we have to logistically get ready to do an accelerated program, and storage will be one of those issues. But I would, I mean, if people want to put more in this year, we could put more than 27,000 in and just augment this year's budget to get a bigger step on the way there, and then come back with a well-thought-out plan about how we're going to do this over two years. I think three years is too long, actually, so, starting with 2019. I know.
Four years.
So I, neither issue with the motion, because I'm not sure if the compromise, compromise, it goes, gets close enough on the compromise, so.
At this point, I think if we sort of just amend this motion, it gets way too complicated. I think we either repeat the motion, or start the motion, and then just keep moving on to that. Jason.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the motion. I'm kind of more the main of the mayor's setting, so.
Anyone else want to speak to that? Call the question on the motion. All those in favor, opposed? Black and white, Elliot, Pryor, Anne, Chappell, all's nice, finish though with motion please. Ooh.
Just like that mindset.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ian, before we put another motion on the table, what could we replace this year? Like, if we increase the budget this year to replace more than, what's in it, how many, 27,000 replaces how many lamps?
I think we're looking at.
69.
69.
69, sorry.
Then is it worthwhile, I, I don't want to, I'm not concluding your answer, I just thought I'd fill in the blank while they were looking it up. Is it worthwhile sort of setting the direction that we want to complete this in two years, and staff comes back and say, a third of it this year, two-thirds of it next year, or half of it this year? And, I mean, if we don't necessarily install half of them in this year, it's just a carryover project and we complete it in the following year.
Mayor Hinesman, yeah, I agree with that. Forgive me, but we were having a side conversation. I just do want to check with Ian that he believes that he can do it in two years, given the resources and the ability to store and contract out before council passes a motion that we can't meet. So perhaps that question would be better.
Well, I think my, my sort of inclination is direct staff to consider two years and come back with what that may look like from a budget point of view. And in that context, also say, we just can't do it, it's going to take us two and a half, three years or not. So I don't necess, I know, I know staff wants it definitive today, but I kind of want to give you the ability to digest what's been said and come back and say, yeah, this is what a two-year program might look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, do you, Mayor Hinesman, I would prefer that, so that we can give a better picture for council in terms of that more aggressive plan, I would all take.
Okay, Karen, in your question, maybe.
Well, I was just, if they're going to bring back that how to do it in two, or, like, 2018, 2019, 2020, like, I'd like whatever options come back to entertain that timeframe, not just 2018, 2019. Like, maybe there's an option for those two years, I'd also want to see that 2020 is included as an option.
Okay, Susan?
I'm just wondering with the, like, the, I'm looking at the capital costs overall for the installation cost from some, in the two-year scenario, that's where I think, that's, and then the accumulated savings, and is that all? Like, the cost, the cost of the LED fixtures, the energy cost of the old fixtures, and the total of that is a, is a, is a full cost all around that? The energy cost of the old fixtures is the energy of the leftover fixtures,
Right.
but not the complete, and the energy cost of the LED fixtures is 9,000 versus 25,000. So to me, it's not like massive.
These are the numbers you need to look at.
Yeah, I am looking at those numbers, including the capital cost and overall cost, but they overall, like, over the three to 10 years, the balance savings, like, coming from 13, 17, 10, 7, and then growing from there.
Are you in the two-year one right now, or the?
I'm in the two and the three to 10.
I mean, the three to 10 is significant.
It's, yeah, sorry, that's scenario, it's scenario three, 10 years.
Yeah. So I'm going to put forward a motion that staff come back with a two- and a three-year scenario to retrofit their existing, what's that? No, in, in some more detailed terms, capacity. A two-year, like, how can we get it done in two years? What would it look like to get done in three years? And bring back a budget strategy and. Is there a second? Second, my counsel's brought them all. Duncan, do you want to speak?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, this is a budget discussion, so if we, if we're reminded to do them quicker, like, say, two years, just tell staff the budget for, I think it was the 117 number,
Yeah.
for each of the two years. And if it turns out to be a carryover, then it's a carryover, but we made a budget decision and we just move on from today. And so, which I think gets us to the same place. I mean, it doesn't, Counselor Elliott talked about an option for three years, so it doesn't break it down into three numbers, it's just still two numbers, but it might happen over three years just because of capacity issues, et cetera.
Yeah, that's actually.
Yeah. Like, I, I get the thing on that, and it's a very efficient way to make the decision today, but it also means we could be taxing people for money we won't spend this year, and I don't like that. But that bothers me when we have big carryovers, and we do often have quite significant carryovers in these years. So, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing it come back and then making a realistic decision about what is possible for this year. And if we have to stack more money into 2019 to get it all done in a two-year scenario, that's fine, but. But I actually think we should do the due diligence to make sure we can actually execute on this and then not tax people for things we're not going to spend this year.
I mean, I see this as, I don't know, maybe because I just want to see it this way, but that's something that would qualify for accumulated surplus. It's something we're going to spend every 22 years, it's not an ongoing every couple of years kind of investment. This is a one-time major retrofit program. After this, it becomes a maintenance program, but this is a one-time major retrofit program. So I see it as something that could be done in cumulative surplus, but I think we're all sort of going in the same intentional direction, and there's some comfort level with some counselors that maybe some more information would be helpful in their decision, but I think generally I'm hearing people want to see this wrapped up. What's the motion?
Needs a little bit of tweaking, but staff bringing back a feasible proposal to complete the LED retrofit program within two years and three years, including a budget strategy.
Options for two, I actually, I'm going to take that motion off the floor, it's just too cumbersome. I think we can tighten it up and be a little more clear. Who's the secretary on that?
Jason.
That was me.
Jason, so you okay with that?
Yeah.
We can find, own that a bit more. Susan?
I'm also interested in, we had also brought up the point of the fact that they all burn out at the same time and having massive budget, the phase, the reason why I originally supported the phase development is that when you're replacing things over a prospective period of time, you're going to actually replace them again a second time. So if you have 25 years and your entire stock is burning out all at once, that's a really negative community impact. So having a three-year phase in actually means that you're replacing things over three years and allows your budget in the long term to be extended as well. So that's why I was supportive of three years, and I also look at just numbers and capacity, and that's a huge, I don't, like, $117,000 to replace everything at once, even though you're seeing.
That's two, just have to do that.
It's just for two years.
It's two. And there are ways, these recurring things, there are ways we can figure a system whereby we don't have these budget impacts every, in two years. I mean, we. Yeah.
It just needs to consider work capacity too. You'd have to contract the whole replacement at the same time.
There's also carbon, the carbon thing.
Yeah. So put forward a motion that council approve 117, 304 in 2018, 117, 304 in 2019, to do a two-year program, assuming there may be some carryover, but for a carryover. And that it be funded through accumulated surplus. Second, if I could. Yes.
This company I've got here says request a fee onsite energy audit analysis.
You made your point, Counselor Pryor.
Yeah.
Free.
Karen?
I'm not going to support this motion. I think we should give staff the time to do their due diligence and come back and make sure that that's a realistic program, so I'd rather have seen it come back for a discussion next week. So I won't be supporting that.
Susan? Right, second thought, I don't support this without an absolute, I'm worried about staff capacity and budget capacity too, that's, that's change, it means that any changes in order.
Well, if it's for community surplus, it doesn't change the number, but.
Correct, you will not have an impact on your taxation pulling up from accumulated surplus other than the fact that you remove, you know, remove savings from your account, so, so that's doable. I think, if I'm hearing correctly, if that turns out to be a program of 100,000 in year one and 200,000 in year two, council's comfortable with that, so that addresses the work capacities, so I think we can look at this for the time being, if that's council, so we can certainly bring you back more information on it.
And so if this is to include it in the budget, the budget is included here.
Correct.
If staff brings back, brings back information that clarifies some of the stuff in the meantime, council has lots of opportunity. This is to see whether or not this goes forward to the public for consideration.
That was sort of my point, is our goal today is to make sure that council's comfortable taking a budget to the public. That's where we'd like to get today.
Exactly. There's still opportunity for things to come in and out. Susan, and then Jason.
Thanks. We say that, but we have an enormous amount of things that we all want to talk about, and when it comes down to actually having meetings and discussions, things get left aside and we end up not having robust discussions. I like this robust discussion, I think if capacity is brought back next week, I don't see a problem with that, and I'd be willing, I just need more information to make that decision, so. I'm going to be not supporting this motion.
Jason.
Yeah, and I know I mentioned this at the previous discussion on this, but I just wanted to add that, you know, for me, in addition to all of the savings, for me, it's actually also about the safety issue when getting on that super. I think that's also an additional reason to consider accelerating it, so. Because I have definitely noticed the difference as driver going through some different intersections where we've done those upgrades recently, and it's very significant.
So this is just to put it in to the existing budget that goes to public, so we get a ready document. We're going to have lots of feedback on it, so this isn't the approval of the budget, this is the approval of what's going forward to, like, publicly. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed? Counselor Chappell and Elliot both motion to refuse. Thanks very much, Ian.
Thank you very much.
Was that your first time in front of council?
Yes, maybe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Where are we? Anishka, Christine, Anishka? Do you have a minute?
I thought you were thinking of.
We're just about to break.
Oh, we're not breaking.
You said we're in here recessed, then you said Ian to go first, so, no?
Oh, yeah, right, forgot about that. We're going to take a few minutes, so council will have an opportunity to read through these. All right, we are recessed, sorry, I forgot about that. We are back in our committee home meeting, we're on our budget item, and we just discussed this, oh, the street conversion program. Next up is the wheelchair lift. We did receive a couple emails, I think they're all from the same person, or were there multiple people? Anyway, Christina, were they all from the same, you got three different emails and letters about the bus.
I only saw one, but I've only seen one.
There was an email, email and a letter.
We got another email today, it was, it was more, it was just like pictures, but I think it was from the same guy. It was a little ambiguous, but I'm assuming it was about this item. Anyway, I can't, don't know if it's two or three people sending stuff in, or it's one person sending stuff in.
Yeah, I've seen two from two different people, and I believe it was from the same person.
Okay.
It's curious, yes, Robert, it's.
So I guess, Tim, maybe for council.
Let's obviously forge a con to adding wheelchair lift and not adding wheelchair lift, maybe from your point of view, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I guess my sense is, as a community, we're trying to be more and more accessible, we have, we have an aging population, and as well, we have some youth that have some accessibility issues. My sense on that is, when we purchase a program, just like we purchase an emergency van, there are some developments, some equipment that needs to be added to make it properly functional. Adding a wheelchair lift is consistent with council's direction to date, that recreation services look at our facilities and programs to be more accessible. A little bit of background is, we do have a motion from council, when we, when we were in here, when we had the WASS, the Whistler, adapt this board, et cetera, et cetera, in a motion directing staff to bring this board in the 2018 budget. I guess my sense on it is, is that accessibility is something we should be advocating for. The, I do understand, I do understand the, the concerns brought forward around capacity, however, I, I don't think they're, they're quite as impactful as, as understood, and I'd be happy to reach out to the concerned citizens. I, I did do a little bit of audits and craft, if council is interested, to see, to see what actually is, is impacted. Our new program van has fifteen seats, and the back row, which has four seats, and the second to back row, which has a double and a single, the double would be removed. So essentially, six seats would be removed temporarily, they, they go in and out as, as required, and then a wheelchair would be added, so another occupant. So it would take the, it would take the occupancy load while there's a wheelchair being accommodated from fifteen to ten.
And it's fairly easy to put the road back in when needed, and if there's no wheelchair use?
What we've heard from the vendor is, yes, there's quick release snaps that, that can be done, and, and training would be provided by, by staff if there's volunteer drivers, if volunteer drivers are uncomfortable, or, then it's not something we would necessarily run with that volunteer. But the, the greater accessibility that we could offer, I think we should offer. Impacts to staff on programming, I noticed there was concern brought forward on that, similar to the recreation access paths, those costs were absorbed by, by the district, by recreation services. So if the program goes from ten occupants, the wheelchair piece aside, goes from ten occupants down to eight, we do not adjust the fee of that program based on eight occupants, and similarly, I don't think we'd want to do that here, so that, that feels wrong.
You have me in a loop, so, you don't have to oversell it.
Yeah.
Unless I'm gonna, unless I hear someone who disagrees with continuing on with the wheelchair accessibility of the van, we're just gonna move on, and, yeah, I don't see anyone disagreeing, so, thank you. And, but I think it would be great if you did just reach out and have a conversation, so they understand the exact parameters of what we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
You're a good question.
Moving on the agenda, I just wanted, hopefully this is a very quick, quick conversation, council had asked that, that staff consider responding to this professional reliance, environmental regulation response that the government had put out, but council wanted to see sort of the tone of which staff was responding to, so Gary's here to speak to that.
Yeah, very quick presentation, it'll be as brief as possible. So, the professional reliance model, you, you know it as the QP or QEP, that's, those are the acronyms that, that you hear that, that relate to this, and it's professional, it's a reliance on professional engineers, biologists, and others to provide advice, and in some cases, decision-making background, it's been a decade or so in the making, particularly 2010 to 2013 in earnest, to reduce the regulatory burden, reliance on professional opinions, and less of the command and control bureaucratic model, and have less government oversight of professional work. And the ubiquity of QPs and QEPs then in, in much of the work that, that we see.
But just to clarify, the QPs and QPs are consultants hired by the proponent, whoever...
By industry or by private landowners, yeah. It's been described as sort of regulatory downloading or regulatory outsourcing, in, in some cases. The intent was to, the intent of this, this review, which is through the ministry environment, is to focus on qualified professionals in these, in the natural resource sector, whether they're biologists through agrologists or foresters through science technicians, and the activities are focusing on mining and forestry. Now, in terms of the background and guidance, there is an excellent summary, the, the letter cited this document from the Environmental Law Center, it's an excellent summary, I read it quite a few, a couple of years ago, right after it came out, it's a really good summary, and I'm relying on my comments here. In terms of the regulatory schemes that were affected, they were numerous, they, the document cited twenty-seven, and I've sort of picked up on about half of them, whether it's remediation of contaminated sites, construction of water supply systems, assessments for impacts on fish bearing streams, the highlighter ones are the ones where they sort of have an immediate and day-to-day impact on, on what the district does. The issues that it raised were, were lengthy, whether or not it's deregulation, giving industry too much control, conflicts of interests go unchecked, it identified a, this is not a complete list. I mean, the critique isn't that it's a success or a failure, it's that it's a bit of both, in some instances it works, in some instances it doesn't. Contaminated site remediation is one where, where it seems to work relatively well, there's less success in the forestry, and as we see in the riparian area protections, when we're dealing with QEPs and QPs on our DP elevens. What that document says is that there are a number of, nine instances when it's not appropriate to have professional reliance, whether it's a moderate to high environmental health and safety risk, there's a high risk to third-party interests, I won't read through them all, it's in the document, this isn't in the executive summary, unfortunately, but sort of, it outlines these nine instances when it's not appropriate to have professional reliance as the model for decision-making in, in environmental or resource management. It's a fairly exhaustive, exhaustive list, and to be honest, there's not a lot passes this. The, the ones where it, where it can pass are, say, the, where contaminated sites, there's clear sets of guidelines, it's, it's administered by a profession that's clearly regulated, with clear standards for who can be part of that, who can conduct those, those reviews, the objectives are clear, the standards are clear, there's not a lot, not a lot of ambiguity. In terms of where it is appropriate, the, the ELC document says, you should, you should, it should pass these criteria, in terms of the clarity on, determine clearly which professionals are qualified to carry out the work, in some cases, it's very clear in forestry, apparently from admiring the document, it, it can be quite ambiguous. There's, you need to have clarity on what the professional function is, and what objectives or criteria need to be met. Determine where the government role needs to be retained in a decision, particularly around drinking water, I would say, well, yes, there's a role for government to retain its, its decision-making. Clearly determining what processes certify qualified professionals, what qualifications do they need to meet. Determining where conflicts of interest undermine professional reliance, and the, this is where it gets very difficult, and there's huge gray areas, particularly with riparian area reports, there's, there's an inherent conflict between the interests of the landowner who's engaged to QEP, who likely wants to develop as much of that land as possible, and the interests of the professional in, in maintaining the, the riparian protection, and there's some very, very interesting cases cited on, on this. Determining and specify what records need to be created and maintained, sometimes it's clear, sometimes it isn't, ensuring that professionals have to maintain liability insurance for accountability, the engineering profession's great for that, other professions, so, ensuring that there's a duty to report, oversights errors and infractions, ensuring that professional work is audited in some form, we are seeing some greater auditing and review of riparian reports in recent months. And then conduct compliance monitoring and enforcement to ensure that there's some check that the system's working, and the document sort of says, in many cases, there really isn't great oversight as to how this is working, so. Moving very quickly, my recommendation, based largely upon my read of the Environmental Law Center document, is that, well, it's likely here to stay, they're likely not going to do, the province likely isn't going to dismantle the system and restaff positions, and that it needs to work, and that if there's any response via the survey or submission via email, that my comments, if directed, will be substantially aligned with the, there are two recommendations, one of which is, use those criteria to determine whether or not it's, it's appropriate, and if so, use those thresholds to determine how it should operate in that, in that arena, so.
Okay, so one of the things I was thinking of when I, I read that report, was, you know, locally, we sometimes, we use professional reliance, but then sometimes we ask a third-party to check what a QP or QEP has provided to us, right? So we ask for a third-party validation. And I, for me, you know, one of the lines in here is, proponents should not be decision-makers for matters involving the weighing and balancing of multiple, often competing environmental and social values. And so, when, I'd like, the, the feedback that I'd like to give to the province is, when there are those competing values between proponents' needs and then the greater good, whether it be fish, wildlife, or that sort of thing, is that, maybe that's an opportunity where there has to be a third-party audit of what the QEP has provided, in the same way that we do that, just so that we have assurances that it's actually, what's good work, it lives up to the standard that we expect. And, and so maybe they set a threshold for, for that instance, and I know they're, you know, focused here on, on mining and forestry specifically, but it's really for all natural resource elements, and, so that's one of the things I'd like to see changed, is the option for, for that third-party. And then the other area where I think this falls down is just the complete lack of monitoring and oversight that, that is provided by the government, and I think that needs to be beefed up in order to put confidence in this model of monitoring. Those would be my two areas where I would enhance our comments.
Any other thoughts on the comments that we submit? I think the three was counsel, I think those are two, I'm gonna go to the other. I don't see any, Jason.
Sorry, I was just wondering if we wanted to put something along the lines of, you know, not downloading to municipalities, and specifically talking about the monitoring and even process, right, and, and making sure that, that, you know, there's anything, 'cause the, I think that's probably the biggest lesson that we learned over the last few years, is that, you know, it can, mega projects that come in can be overwhelming for municipality when we don't have the resources to address.
Particularly on the monitoring side of things, yeah.
And I don't know if this is appropriate, if I need to say that, but, I heard a survey, but...
Did you understand that here?
Yes, I, what I've heard is that we need to address third-party imperative use whether there's conflict, the monitoring and oversight needs to be beefed up, and that that monitoring and oversight needs not to be downloaded.
Doug?
Yeah, it's, it's tricky, I mean, some of the larger ones, I mean, you think of the Wood Fiber one, for example, where there's a whole bunch of different issues, and it went through an EA assessment process, that didn't satisfy a large portion of the public, and, and so that, that type of thing almost demands a peer review of some kind, like Counselor Elliott was talking about, there just shouldn't be reliance by the EA, I'm not sure what process they go through, but there shouldn't be just reliance by the EA office to, to take in these professional reports that come in. I mean, as a former professional, I understand some of the issues around this, and, and some of them are as minor as, you know, the flood construction level, you have to have a, a QEP that says that the property can be used safely, and that's a community charter thing, it used to be the provincial government, and now it's, the guy goes out there and gets his QEP, and he puts a stamp on it, and, and so you hope these professional associations are maintaining standards, like they tried to do with lawyers, and it's not perfect by a long shot, these are self-governing professions, and the government isn't directly involved in those. So, you can rely on them to a point, they have insurance policies, you can sue them if the house washes away, but, but there's also potentially safety issues, loss of life, and you just can't replace that kind of stuff, of course, so, so it is kind of tricky, and on those little one-offs, even, they can blow up on you, but I think that the major ones, if you caught some of the larger ones in environmental assessments, you'd catch a lot of these that are, I don't wanna say they're all bad, but I think certainly there's, there's a lack of public confidence in them, I think that's one of the things I came away from that Wood Fiber debate with, was, was just the lack of public confidence in some things that should be institutions in the province, you know, oil and gas commission, things like that, there was just, people just didn't have confidence in their decisions or their ability to regulate what was, what was ultimately mandated, or might be ultimately mandated, so, so it's, it's the result of governments cutting, and, and I agree with the statement, we're unlikely to see them re-staff them, at least in their entirety, notwithstanding a new government eventually, but, but if they can have some more hands-on, government hands-on, I think that's certainly a problem.
I think key to what Doug was saying is, is making sure people have confidence in the process, so, I think in articulating what we'd like to see changed, ultimately, one of the goals is that we'll certainly see some confidence in the process that we're not seeing now.
I think unfortunately, having been through those two EAO processes with Garibaldi at Skwamish, or three, I think there's some failings with the Environmental Assessment Act, which is a separate...
That's another topic altogether.
I mean, the classic being, they actually conducted a third-party review of the Garibaldi at Skwamish visitation numbers, and ignored it. I mean, that, that's not a failing of the, of the professional reliance model, that's a failing of an entirely different sort of...
Yeah, and EA poses a, or, or, different, I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Karen, one more comment, and then we gotta move on, where...
Well, I was just gonna, I was wondering if we could sneak in our UVCM resolution, which asks for us to be a line item with funding from the EA, so where EA is involved, and we are relying on a professional reliance model, that local governments are provided funding through the EA process, that we can conduct our own third-party assessments, where we feel that there is conflict, and we need that scrutiny, so, I mean, it's just another way for, I mean, that resolution did pass at UVCM, but, let's put it everywhere.
Yeah, 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 no. Any other comments? Everyone feel confident in staff's response then?
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're done, right?
No, we are not done.
Don't turn the page, don't...
Growth management works up. We have half the time. We're getting brought in, and we're, we're gonna break at some point so that they can deconstruct, Dr. Bookie, my doctor. We will have time if we need. Hope anyone wants to let Ms. Christine and Erin know that. Right, Matt, whenever you're ready.
Okay. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, my name is Matt Gutt, I am a planner with the District of Skwamish.
Sarah McJanet, planner.
And we are here to talk about the official community plan by law 2500 and some specific growth management policies. And we are here to talk about the official community plan by law 2500 and some specific growth management policies. I'm going to start off with a quick review of the growth management context. Then we'll talk about, we'll give an overview of the growth management policies, three slides, pretty high level. I'll do a little bit of a review of some of the public input we've received about these policies since the draft went out for first reading on December 1st. And then we're going to go through seven policies, one by one, at which I'd like to put it up and get feedback from council on those particular policies. And that's the intent of this meeting, we would like to have more direct feedback on those specific policies. So, first off, context, the OCP maintains a strong focus on growth management. It directs growth to serviced infill locations prior to peripheral areas. This is, the intention of this is really to support efficient land use, ensure cost-effective development servicing, and that's related to our sewer, water, roads, trails, and parks, and to preserve natural areas. And it really reflects the public input that was received from the community throughout the OCP process, which is highlighted in our engagement summaries that we've had produced over the course of this process. Growth management overview, three slides to give you a sense of the policies we're going to talk about, and these are all things that you've heard before, but just as a refresher. In the growth management section of the OCP, we have identified policies related to a growth management boundary. The growth management boundary is the red line on Schedule C, which you can see on the slide here. The growth management boundary is identified to delineate the primary focus for community growth. It surrounds the intended area for residential development and associated uses until substantial completion of infill development has occurred. There are some specific uses that are supported outside the growth management boundary. Those include significant employment generating activities, industrial uses with minimal servicing, recreation tourism, and airport development. The growth management boundary does exclude future residential neighborhoods, lands, which are identified, outlined in blue on the slide. These are lands that have been identified to accommodate future growth, that will require detailed severya planning to determine phasing, servicing, and land uses. Now, I mentioned substantial completion, so we, the intention is to focus growth inside the growth management boundary until we've got substantial completion of infill. Substantial completion is defined in the OCP. It's when the district's population reaches 34,000. And I do want to clarify, because this does come up over and over again in our public consultation, that 34,000 is a population threshold, not a cap. That's one potential trigger for considering substantial completion to have been achieved. The other one is that construction has been completed for 75% of the development potential. And the intention of that is to ensure that we don't get into a situation where our population has reached a threshold, but we've got a restriction on available lands to develop. So one note about the 34,000, the 34,000 number as the population threshold reflects our current population, plus the population equivalent of the proximate number of dwelling units we believe can be added through infill development in existing neighborhoods. And that number of dwelling units is approximately 5,900, and that's where that number has come from. There's policy in the growth management section that says limited development of future residential neighborhoods can be considered once the population reaches 22,500. And this is really about considering an application for development of future residential neighborhoods. If the population has reached 22,500, if the development proposal provides extraordinary community benefits, and council has adopted a list of defined policy precursors. That would be a discretionary choice of council whether to consider and provide rezoning opportunities in those future residential neighborhood lands, if those conditions had been met. And then finally, for a review of growth management policies, three things that I wanted to highlight. The first, there is policy recognizing that lands acquired by First Nations through accommodation agreement that we would consider, or the District of Squamish would consider future adjustments to the growth management boundary to accommodate these areas through a collaborative government-to-government joint planning process. A second policy I want to highlight is that municipal water and sewer servicing would not be extended above an elevation of 200 meters, although there are a few specified circumstances for health reasons that it would potentially be extended above 200 meters. But in general, that's a policy that's in our current OCP and has been carried forward into this one. And then a third policy I just wanted to bring up, and this is a policy that has been in the document since the discussion draft, but in light of some of the discussion at the council table following a SLRD regional growth strategy amendment that has been discussed by council, there is a policy in the OCP that says major destination resort community development outside the district's growth management boundary or on the periphery of the District of Squamish boundary is not supported. So that's something that maybe we're discussing. And so all of these policies that we've talked about, there are seven. We'll go through those one by one later in this discussion, and we can get into those individually. We've had some growth management public feedback since the release of the draft for first reading, and I've done a summary of what we've heard from the community. Now, one thing I want to point out is that some people have mentioned several items, but I've tried to identify what people were highlighting. And so someone who's mentioned one of these items may have also mentioned another one of these items. So there's been some overlapping in the comments from the community. But 148 people highlight, asked that the draft be changed to eliminate the 22,500 threshold for limited development in future residential neighborhood. 108 people requested that we eliminate the 34,000 population threshold for development in future residential neighborhoods. 81 people requested that we eliminate a specification that small portions of limited development be considered in future residential neighborhoods under certain circumstances. 47 requested that we eliminate the requirement for policy precursors to be adopted prior to future residential neighborhood development. Six requested that we include future residential neighborhood lands within the growth management boundary. Two requested that we consider servicing for development over 200 meters. Two had comments regarding housing type, or, there was one question, one comment that asked us to do a better analysis of what housing types were desired, rather than just dwelling units in general. And another one that was requesting we support an increased level of single hatch dwelling in the growth management policies. And then there were two comments that were suggesting stronger growth management. One said, "Do not develop any future residential neighborhood before 34,000 threshold of population is reached." And another suggested raising the threshold to 50,000. These numbers don't reflect what's in the memo, because I adjusted them, they continue to come in over the last several days, and I updated that, so that's a good as of maybe 10:00 this morning. One thing, there were a few comments, and I haven't highlighted them here because these comments aren't really specific to some of our policies, but there were a number of comments around, or references to a desire to have more supply of land, comments along the lines of, "It's expensive to buy a home, I'm having trouble, I would like to have more supply in the community to bring down prices." And I think one thing we just want to highlight is there is, of course, the difference between supply in available land, which has zoning for development, and housing product being created and available to the community. And so, for example, we've got, you know, our biggest infill growth area is the downtown area, and doing a look at what we are currently zoning for in terms of development and applications that have been made to the District of Squamish. In the downtown area, we've got zoning for another, almost 3,000 units, and there are applications totaling over 800 units for the downtown area alone. And so with that zoning for 3,000 units, the supply of land isn't necessarily at the crux, it's that it hasn't all been built out to create homes for development, so.
And we don't, developers control the supply side. And they'll work to find them when they want to, we don't control the supply side necessarily, other than we can make sure land is available to create competition, essentially.
Exactly, and so that's our highlight, that we, that there is land available for that purpose. You can see there's a large number of units that are zoned and available.
And I just want to make sure we're being really specific, because most of those aren't first, I've seen found homes, most of those are duplex, multifamily slash condo.
Yeah, in general, in the discussion that I'm doing today, I generally am talking about dwelling units as equivalent. Now, in past meetings, I have been asked about single detached units. I believe Counselor Blackman will fit that, raise that question. And so I do have some slides to single detach, if there is interest in hearing more about that. But in general, these are all regarding just units in general. So that's the overview of where we're at, and we've discussed this many times in the past. What we're really hoping for today is that we can go through some of these policies that have been the focus of most of the responses to the draft that is currently out before the public, and get a sense of the level of council support for the existing policy, or if we need to start thinking about changes to these policies for second reading or the public hearing draft of the document. So we're open to discussion, and we'd like input from staff, or from council on these.
So we want to do that, do you want to focus it down on specifics, or?
Yes, I have seven slides, seven policies which are outlined in the memo, and I'd like to put them up one at a time and ask if council has specific information.
So we're gonna do them one at a time, so, without getting into those ones, are there questions just so far about what's come up?
I'll wait for a moment.
Okay, Jason?
So on this one, I think this is a good compromise, and I'm very supportive of these policies.
Do you want to speak on this one?
On this, yeah, I want to speak on it. Can you just look back to the numbers where you had all the questions?
All the questions?
You know, with the stats.
Oh, these ones, yeah, sorry, I just second here.
And, you know, this is, this is the kind of thing that always gets me about these big planning things. 148 people eliminate threshold, less than 0 threshold, right? 108 don't want any threshold to the 31,000.
34.
Yeah, the 22,500 threshold is the threshold before which.
I understand the threshold, but these are people commenting on our OCP that say, eliminate that number.
That's right, they're saying, we don't think that threshold should be there.
Can I just put a finer point on that, that's since the first reading went out?
Since the draft for the first reading went out. So on December 1st, we put out the draft, then we had the first reading in December, but we've taken everything since that December 1st date.
Yes, so I just want to clarify, all the public engagement, as you said, leading up to that, there were lots of comments about managing our growth. So I don't, I just don't, I just want to put in context that this is, this is just since the draft came out, they're commenting directly on the draft versus inputting into the whole process from the beginning.
It's kind of not fair then, because I haven't, I can't see all the numbers derived to that. There might be 22, there might be 148 people say, "Keep that," so then that's a wash for me. In looking at these numbers, but what I might have to say, on the threshold caps, I have heard by numerous people talking about costs of housing. And I was a big instigator of the threshold, you know, growth management, when the first came out. For, I agreed with that. And then after that, I thought, well, maybe I'm not so right. Because I had so many people come up to me and go, "Why would you put a cap on something? When, you know, there's, everything's so expensive, you cap it." So on that question that you have up there with the 3500, and I know it's talking about going into other areas, I don't support that because of all the people that brought that up. And it's not like three or four people, lots of people, a lot smarter than me, say that.
So, Madam, wondering if you could maybe articulate the pros and cons to these thresholds? Because there's obviously pros and cons to all these decisions, so there are, maybe you can just outline some of it.
Sure, and we actually have slides for each of these thresholds to talk about. Should we maybe address them? And we've got a bit of rationale for those that we can talk to. And I would also like to highlight that I hear your comment about, we're only hearing the response at this point to the proposed policies, and we don't have the, I'm not presenting the information leading up to it. But I do have a bit of a review, if you want, that I can go into as to how we got here, with a few of the graphics from the engagement summaries along the way. Like, there was really strong support for growth management throughout our engagement process. And in the end, when we get to growth management, this is kind of one of the ways we're articulating. But there certainly is strong support for those equivalent policies of some sort.
And I agree from a planning point of view, and a lot of that has to do with people seeing these townhomes and condos all over. I mean, these are the people that are moving out of town, and they're going, "Oh my God, it's under the growth, it's just going crazy." But putting that cap on, it's not going to stop them.
It's not a cap, it's a threshold, and the reason why it's a threshold, maybe you want to maybe.
Well, I kind of understand.
Well, why don't we, we'll get to each one of those as we go through, but essentially, okay, so the, should I jump to the 22,500, or should we go through sequentially?
Well, I'd go through them, I mean, my comment is, I don't support that one.
Okay, that's.
Well, let's hear, we're asking questions, and we'll get to opinions in a minute. I want to make sure everyone has the same information out there, and everyone has, so go ahead.
Me? So, I have to admit, when I, and I agree on growth management, and, you know, don't misunderstand me, but when I looked at the 34,000, it struck me as being a bit of an arbitrary number, and I take the point of how you calculated that. But you have landowners who bought property when there was no threshold, or bought property when there was a 22,500 threshold, and now are moving the goalposts to 34,000. So is that what we want to do? So let me play devil's advocate and ask you, what if we took both thresholds out? And said, "There's no development unless there is, points that you mentioned, significant community benefit, et cetera," and maybe have a discussion around the small increments? Because I think we're not talking about putting a couple of district locks on the market all of a sudden. What would happen, I mean, if that kind of thing happened? We still want to control and manage growth, we still want to promote infill, we still have smart growth in mind, we don't want to head off into greenfields and chop down trees. But what would happen if we just took the numbers? How would staff regard that?
I think, so the policy structure right now does set some of these defined points at which we start considering things. And so, applications before that, if someone was to come in and ask about an application, first off, with the 22,500, we would say, "Well, under the OCP, it's not considered right now with the 22,500." If we were to remove that one, we are then open to considering someone coming in with an extraordinary benefit. So in that sense, that doesn't change, it just says we can do that now versus in a few years from now, which is when we'll probably reach 22,500. The 34, if we remove the 34, and we say it's open to only, essentially you're saying, say, "We are not open to developing these lands except in extraordinary circumstances."
Yeah, if I may add to this, I think it weakens our infill priority focus. Because the one thing that's really worth about the past OCP, the current OCP, is that threshold. It's a hard number that, you know, people, it's a very quick answer, yes or no. Whereas if you remove those targets, then, you know, people, well, it's more of an incentive to, "Okay, what do I need to do to get, what kind of benefits do you want?" So I think if we want a really strong focus on infill, then we need to have those targets. And if we remove them, then it's, we're indicating that it's possible. And there is no phasing in terms of filling out the areas that we currently have, that have services available.
Within, I mean, we update our OCP every five years, ideally. We're not even going to, like, for me, this number is less important because it's probably 15, 20 years, maybe even outside of the scope of this OCP period anyway. So it's, it helps to focus our infill, but it really is almost majorly running a number for this OCP, because in five, seven years, we won't be even close to that. The other number is perhaps a more challenging number, because it is within the, probably the five years of this scope of this OCP before it gets amended again. So for me, I'm not, I don't actually think this is the really that challenging number, but that's just my point of view. I've got Susan, Jason.
Thank you. I'm confused by construction that's going to be completed for 75% of established development. I'm confused by construction that's going to be completed for seventy-five percent of established development potential. Do you mean going up? Do you mean going out? Do you mean, I think that's really arbitrary when you look at our capacity.
There is a, there is a, Madam, what, how do we define that?
I'm just grabbing.
There's a difference.
There's a difference.
There's a difference.
I've got it defined, yeah, so, okay, so, and I think I'll answer two or kind of comment on two things at this time. I think the thirty-four thousand, essentially it is saying that we are not developing those lands. It's essentially saying the same thing as what you are proposing, Councilor Rice, that we are not developing now. It's, it's out a long ways. And so we have this extraordinary benefits piece that is, is a different approach to that. But it essentially does say the same thing. But I do think, I do think there's a perception piece by having a number there that strengthens it because it gives it, it does give it a defined endpoint. And so, you know, and it comes down to, you know, council is going to be making this decision. And I think as you get closer to some of these numbers, it actually, that, I think the numbers become more relevant. And so it may actually further down the road become more important at that point. At which time, along the way, it may have been changed. But I think it definitely is putting it in the same place that you're saying that it's, we're not doing it right now. I think there's a perception piece that could make it stronger later.
No, just on that, yeah, just, I just want to add to that. I mean, a perfect example is Mr. James Land who has had that threshold on it and it hasn't multiple times tried to move it forward, but it hasn't because of the threshold here in OCP. So it does have an effectiveness.
And, and sorry, to your point, sorry, the reason I started there is because, which is not answering your question, I apologize, is because I think, and I'll read you the definition for the seventy-five percent. But I see it as a similar piece that it's, this one's even harder for us to define at this point. And so the way it's, but I think later on it becomes more important. So the seventy-five percent of the development potential established under, the combination of any density targets outlined in all approved subarea plans. So all subarea plans, all the density targets in any subarea plans we develop, the maximum densities enabled under existing zoning regulations for vacant parcels in areas not included in subarea plans, and floor area ratios identified in land use designations for vacant undeveloped parcels in the downtown area. So there are three pieces that we would use to construct what that seventy percent of the development, established development potential is. And that would be a process to figure out what that number is. It's not something that we could live off in a few years. It would be something as we got closer-
Which is interesting, what I'm hearing in here now is that until it's figured out, it's arbitrary and it really doesn't mean anything. So I don't mind, I totally agree with your point on the thirty-four, on the, on the thirty-four thousand, but I don't know what, when I, when I think about seventy-five percent, I could, I think in all different directions. So, so it could never be achieved because you can always build more. So, so yeah, I'd support the thirty-four thousand, but I don't support the seventy-five percent. Until it actually has some defined boundaries because, I mean, with, with the amalgamation of some of the values.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
The, one of the, so there, there are three things that we, we use to build it. And one is subarea plans, until the subarea plans are completed, it would be blank. And so perhaps this could say, you know, this can't be utilized until those subarea plans are completed. Maybe that's a piece of it or?
If I can add to that, the other way we could also do it is we do have, we've developed this assessment of how much capacity each neighborhood has. And so we can base that going forward, you know, on this, on this projection, which is a six thousand unit number. So it'd be fairly easy to then go back and compare to where we're at from this going forward.
Can I just follow up on that? So I'm interested in the fact that we haven't put neighborhood plans in our, I haven't seen neighborhood plans in the budget. So how can we move, like, I'm interested in finding out when those neighborhood plans are going to be in the budget and how we are doing our subarea plan alongside, we've got a lot of OCP process, which is great. Are the neighborhood plans coming in, is your point?
If I may, for you, Chair, we have neighborhood plans identified, I believe, in the 2018 budget and going forward. We didn't identify in this, in the 2018 budget because we're going to be working on the zoning battle. That's going to be another big, um, big piece.
Okay, yes. And we're, we're probably fifteen, twenty years old, so.
No, no, you missed it, I don't remember.
Okay, okay.
Thirty-four thousand, I was just trying to remember some of those.
Okay. Any more comments on, yeah?
So, I mean, I, I think that this is actually good though because it's an or, it's not that has to be both, right? So it's an or question and, and, you know, I think the important thing to keep in mind is that there's two things. Number one, even though we've spent a lot of the last two years doing a lot of rezonings for infill development in the downtown area and a lot of these areas, it's not a for sure thing that those developments will happen. And so if we water down some of the growth boundary provisions and there's lots of development happening in, you know, what are ostensibly greenfield sites, it may very significantly impact the way that the community develops. And we could have a lot of empty lots downtown, we could have brownfields still, we could have a lot of those things. And so that's the whole purpose, is you use growth management to fill those areas in first. And there's, we all know what the really good reasons are. Is that, you know, the infrastructure is already there, it's more walkable, there's, you know, we know all those good things. So I think it is important to have those clear objectives so that when, when land is training on the market, that potential developers are aware of the timeline and don't have unrealistic expectations and don't pay unrealistic prices for land that, that is out there. And then I think just the second thing, just to address affordability issues, I think if it was twenty years ago, throwing a whole bunch of lots on the market would probably have an, would have had an impact on pricing because we were more of a self-contained housing market, you know, people living and working here. But that's no longer the case. Our housing prices are determined by what the benchmark price is in Metro Vancouver. And we could throw two thousand more housing units on the market and they have very little impact on pricing. And in fact, developers would not put all of that on the market because they need to get their return. So I just want to make it very clear, I know it sounds super obvious, like, 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 let's just put more housing on the market, but it's not going to achieve affordable housing. The only way it would is if it was owned by a nonprofit or the government and, you know, we're going to do it that way. But that's not what we're talking about, so.
Jason, continue.
Okay, thank you. So I, I feel like there's some, there's support for this policy within, I think a change that we discussed.
That's true.
To those, those plans being completed.
Well, and that's some of the pre-approached conversations. I'm sorry, I let you go up all that coffee I drank.
Yeah, I think there, the comment was that the seventy-five percent of the established development potential is reliant on some inputs from subarea planning. And so we could say that-
Further finding that.
Yeah, that, and say that those have to be done for that, that criteria to be engaged. Does that make sense?
Just briefly on that one.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I think that should be a, I mean, I agree with the concept. And I think it should be a user-friendly sentence. And so I would, if you had numbers or you could publish with this, this is what it is today. And of course, it'd be updated when the application came in. But to make it as user-friendly and as clear as possible. So it might be just concept studies, but the wording kind of gets misogynistic.
And this was originally eighty-five percent. And there was a lot of discussion about, is that making it so it actually would, at the end of that process, you'd actually have really bad affordability issues because you have a very small amount of people controlling the remaining land. So there was some latitude, extra latitude putting that under. Susan, Ted?
Thanks. I also, I have no problem with a cap, like with my cats or thresholds. I'll get used to that term. What I do have concern with is we are, as Councilor Blackman Wolf mentioned, you know, we have applications coming in for zone land that's industrial, that's green space, that's, you know, that's marked for seniors housing. And we have this, we have benchlands that are, regardless of who owns them, that are completely industrial, that could be developed, that are close to infrastructure, that are safe, that don't require FCL, that could be seniors housing, they could be all sorts of things. And that, that the whole climate thing really, I worry about the safety of our community not developing on benches. And I understand density and walkability, but I don't think developing on benches precludes walkability. I think that you can design and demand subarea plans that actually exclude resources such as businesses and, and local-
I think your comments are going to be relevant for some of the other topics.
For all of the other, some of the topics, no?
Yeah, that's it. Uh, Ted?
I was just thinking that, you know, percentages and percentages are good. The population, thirty-four thousand. I mean, a guy could use until the next OCP review as a, for a lot of things because it's not going to happen until he's amended again.
Just to reply to that through you, Mayor Hansman, I think in many ways, that's, when we're drafting it, that is our assumption that that, that's going to be, you know, as time goes on, those will be reexamined.
As you get close to that possibility.
Reexamination, yeah.
Okay, on to the-
Number two. This next section is in regards to the extraordinary benefits clause for future residential neighborhoods. And currently, that limited development that would be considered on future residential neighborhoods, the policy restricts it to small portions of the parcel. The idea here is to ensure that extensive peripheral development does not occur before substantial development of infill areas has been completed. But it is an item that has come up for discussion in the public process. And so I'm wondering if the small portions is something that council feels appropriate.
Well, and what would define small portion?
It is not defined, so it will be very subjective and defined. Yeah, discretion of council would be the end.
I think the challenge is that most of the lots that the future residential are big, big four hundred acre lots and bigger or smaller, but they're big lots. So that small portion, it's hard to understand what that actually means because once a context of the excellent lots that are in the future residential, which are owned by very few landowners and are very big lots. Ted?
Yeah, I want to agree with that. I mean, you could take small out. It's more about the limited development maybe considered in the future residential areas. I mean, it has to be kind of a smart growth, right? And if you say small, small portion and someone says, well, we'd like to develop this, we've got five hundred acres and we want to do a hundred acres. Well, that's not small, but if you go seventy-five acres, we're not going to get our loop with the pipe. So let's extend it so we can get the loop with the pipe. Well, now it's a hundred acres. So what does small have to do with that?
And I, small, I think, just to add on to that, is let's say you have a very large site. A lot of it might be environmentally sensitive or have lots of trails. And so your actual infrastructure is massive, but your developable area is small. So I think, I think that's where the definition becomes a little problematic in terms of what does it actually mean? Is it footprint? Is it size of infrastructure? Is it area of land or the overall development? Like it just, for me, it's a hard thing to get my brain around in terms of what it's, I know what it's trying to achieve, but I'm not sure the language is achieving the intention.
I was also thinking about small. So I wonder if, well, I wondered about supporting our infrastructure. So whatever infrastructure we have to take, so I feel like small needs to be contiguous to existing infrastructure in order to start the discussion of what small means. So it can't just sort of get plunked in the middle of a future neighborhood. It's got to be connected to something. And then does small mean that the taxes we collect from that small area supports the infrastructure we have to put in place or the servicing? Because it's got to be big enough to pay for itself, but not too big. And, and should, you know, is, if I own a hundred percent of a piece of property, I might think that sixty percent, developing sixty percent of my land is small because I'm not going to get a hundred percent. But maybe for the rest of the community, it's thirty percent. So I'm, I, I think there should be like a, a range possibly. I'm a bit nervous about saying that because I don't know how you define it. Like Ted said, a hundred acres of five hundred acres is different than if you own a hundred acres in those future neighborhoods and you want a two hundred acres.
Before you respond, I'll just get one more comment from Councilor Rice and then you can respond.
Well, hung up on the same thing. And, and I was trying to think of, you know, Quest University, for example, which was rezoned before I was on council quite a few years. But that was quite a significant area that the OCP was amended to allow for residential. There's hundreds of units that the public hasn't even seen yet that are going to be built there. But there was a huge community benefit. And so the council at the time said, yeah, it's worth it, obviously. And so I think the only way I can think about it is, is this large, small thing, to me, would relate to the benefit somehow. And so if you could, I mean, if there was another quest that came along, whatever that might be, it might be worthwhile rezoning five hundred acres to do it. But that's a decision. I mean, you don't, not likely, obviously, but, but, you know, it's very hard to put a line in that. And it's very hard to say, well, yeah, what is small? Twenty acres of a twenty acre parcel is not small, but a five hundred acre parcel, yeah, it's small. So I guess I would just try to work with that a little bit. And maybe the only thing I can suggest is, I think the contiguous point is worthwhile certainly because that mitigates and minimizes infrastructure. But the other part is maybe commensurate with the, with the perception of benefit received. And it's going to be obviously a decision of the council at a particular time that's going to have to deal with that.
Go ahead. Just to expand on this, I think that's what proved so tricky with in terms of crafting this policy because from where we sit today, it's very hard to describe or know all of the circumstances in the context of a specific proposal or opportunity or application. So it was, you know, on one hand, we were trying to highlight that we weren't, we weren't promoting the idea of the entire parcel coming forward. It was a portion of. But I think from where we sit today, it's very hard to craft that. So I like some of the suggestions that have come up around relating it to the benefit and the contiguousness of the, of the parcel.
I think-
Cost implications to the-
Yeah. I think, you know, what likely is to happen, that a proponent bringing forward an application would have to make a case for what made the most sense.
And with all of those different considerations around servicing and, you know, compact and walkability and connectivity and those kinds of things.
Madam, do you want to add to that? You've been here.
Yeah, maybe just a summary then. Some criteria, essentially a contiguous portion with the proportion of the overall parcel linked to the cost and benefits of the community. Something along those lines, I think, ties together what we've been talking about. Is that the only thing at all?
Sounds like it's getting there. You want to call it in then?
I think-
Go ahead.
I mean, I think it has to solve a problem for the district. Like I think that's sort of, they could be able to, and that's-
We'll get there.
Coming, I guess, so.
Well, the cost and benefit thing, I think, I mean, if I understand the numbers correctly, I keep hearing, we never make money in residential. You know, for every dollar of services, we collect something like seventy-five cents in taxes. And so I'm not sure that we can impose some higher standard on the next residential development. But that aside, I think we'd want to make sure that costs were minimized or as far as possible and were realistically minimized. And so we're not doing something ridiculous. But I'm not sure you could actually put a hard dollar, it has to, taxation has to equal cost. I'm just not sure you can get away with that.
I was thinking of a generalized term regarding the cost and benefits to the community, which would then encompass the extraordinary benefits to the community and, you know, the cost of infrastructure would be fairly generalized. And discretion, it would be a district council discretion. Okay.
And for that matter, removing the term small, because I think it's become redundant.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. I thought that was a five.
Yeah. Okay. Policy number three. So this is the, this will be the discussion around that first threshold of 22,500. Right now, the OCP reads that limited development in future residential neighborhoods would not be considered until the district's population has reached 22,500. The rationale behind or the intent behind this policy in there is that it picks up on existing policy that is in the OCP that was applied to some of the future residential neighborhoods and then applies those to all that are now in that future residential neighborhood category, as well as reflecting the strong support for infill development that had been expressed through the OCP policy. But this is one of the, the items that has come up through the recent input to, based on the draft that is out there right now. So it's something that I wanted to discuss with council.
Any thoughts on this? Karen.
I like maintaining the consistency from the last OCP to this one. I also think it gives us time to start looking at those policy precursors in a thoughtful So I don't mind keeping this one in. I, I think it actually makes sense. And we've just approved some major developments within that boundary. And it would be important to see those have an opportunity to build out so we don't end up with big gaps on pieces of land.
Yeah. Last council term, I was one of the councilors that, in the minority, that voted to remove this from one particular parcel. And I voted that way because I didn't think it was fair just to pick on that one particular parcel and not others. So now we're extending this about anybody outside the growth area. But reading that, once again, let me play devil's advocate. We have now attached to future growth, a whole bunch of other conditions, significant community benefit, et cetera, et cetera. And so I, let me put it to you, is it necessary? Because one of the effects of that might be that, you know, 22,500 compared to where we are today is, at previous growth levels, is about five years away, approximately. So if a significant benefit was there, would we want to wait five years for it? Or would we want to be able to deal with it right now? If there was a significant benefit? So it's kind of, once again, I'm just sort of arguing the other side. I, I take the point and, and so I'm past the fairness thing. I mean, now it applies to everybody. But do we need it if we've got these other things there? These other things that by themselves constitute a threshold or a bar that the developer would have to, have to get past?
And I just think it's interesting that the wording before says portion and this says limited development. Is that, is that the way you articulated in this presentation?
Yeah, I, I did want to point out that these slides have, I've truncated the language, so this isn't the exact representation. I'm just trying to get a sense of some of the overall intent from council. So I've, I've modified these just to get a few, you know, so there are a few words up there, fewer words.
Do you want to speak to, Councilor Reese's, I mean, yeah, you speak to the, you obviously talked about some pros, pros and cons of having this interim threshold.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, I think we've had two comments on this policy and I, I think they reflect the, the two sides of the, the question that we have to answer. There was, you know, significant input from the community about trying to focus on infill development. And by having that number there, we do force more infill because it's just not going to be contemplated going beyond 22,5, or going beyond the growth management boundary until we reach 22,500. We are, we are saying we are fully committed to infill in the growth management boundary until we reach that population threshold. And that does reflect some of the input we got during the public consultation process. We did do a survey. There were a bunch of people that did support the 22,5 or even a higher threshold. And we can pull up those. I do have the, the graphs if you want to take a look at those. But there was, there was strong support for, for that as a, as a growth management policy. But on the flip side, if we remove it, we are still not saying, let's go into, let's go beyond the growth management boundary. If we remove it, we are saying that if there is an extraordinary opportunity, we would consider going there. And if we do keep the policy precursors piece, then there is going to be a time during which those need to be completed. If we maintain policy that says those have to be completed before we contemplate even an extraordinary benefits application. So there's, there's a few different ways that this could play out. But it comes down to how strongly do we want to focus on infill development and how much latitude do we want our policy to give us for contemplating an application with extraordinary benefits?
Susan, Ted. I, yeah, I think having two numbers can be confusing to the public. And I, and I go back to the bench comments that I made previously. I think that these lands up on the bench that are industrial, we, the fact that we're considering developing other green spaces and things.
Industrial.
Not industrial, it's future residential now.
I think.
Yeah, but it has been, it has been previously.
Future residential.
Yes.
It's currently future residential.
It's currently future residential, correct. But is much more suited for development than other lands in the district. Because of, if we're taking, if, if climate is, you know, a consideration, I also worry about affordability. And I brought this up at our OCP meeting and the comment about affordability wasn't addressed where we, if we constrain land and don't allow development in other areas, especially up on bench lands, where people don't have enough CL and don't have building code issues because of diking and everything else, it, it may actually be more affordable to build in those areas as opposed to down in lands that are at construction level.
Isn't the case on Skydive?
No, that's.
Yeah, I just, can I respond to that one? Just in regards to that second point, I apologize if we didn't address a, a comment that was made in a previous meeting. And I, I do remember talking with some staff about that afterwards. And I do, I think many of these lands that are on the benches, the benches are actually, they have a fair bit of topography in them. And I think things that we've seen on some of those steep slope developments, the, the work that's needed to, to create, to put infrastructure in the ground, roads, sewer water, and to build housing sites, I think it, it will actually be significant, a significant amount in some of these lands, not all of them, but some of them will have high cost associated with them. There are some of the bench lands that are not as much so, but there are some that will.
We should be privilously addressed by doing strata sites. So.
Another.
To us, not to them.
Quick point is that, and while we look to these, sort of these upper lands to rid ourselves of flood hazard risk, we are in an environment where there's multiple types of hazards. So in terms of wildfire protection planning and these fires and those kinds of things that are definitely impact from climate as well. So that's the most exciting thing about planning in Tlomish. So you kind of trade one hazard for another in some of these areas. So we're, and I'm paying a bill and I'm going to get a high five from the fire chief. But I think those are other considerations to, in addition to this deep slope. There's lots to think about.
Just with that one comment, those can be mitigated with excellent fire planning. Way cheaper than the giant debris flow hazards or liquefaction or rockfall and all the other hazards we have down here. Higher level bench lands are known to be safer for, even though we do have a fire hazard, it's still easy to mitigate and do planning around fire hazards.
Yeah, thanks. What is our population now?
As of 2016, 19,500.
We had, it's well over 20,000. We had 500 new houses or something in our stock just last year.
I, I really found what Councilor Reese was interesting there with, you know, you could even leave the number in there, but extraordinary benefits, if there's anything else there that wants to come in. Because if, if the 22,5 is four years away, it might make the extraordinary benefits bigger if someone wants to come in pre, pre to that. So we might get some really interesting benefits that we don't even know. So if you added to that, will not be considered until, unless there's extraordinary benefits.
My apologies that this is truncated. This is actually part of the policy that says, it, it, this policy actually says, we won't consider until the population has reached 22,500 and their extraordinary, extraordinary benefits and the policy precursors have been adopted. I truncated it just to focus on this one.
Both and or?
It's, it's an and.
Still have all those other things.
Yeah.
And it still has to reach 22,5.
Exactly.
Before that. But what I'm saying is, if someone's four or five years away from offering benefits, if they're extraordinary, if they want to come in, I mean, bigger developers are going to take four or five years. It might get us as a community more benefits if there's a door in to get you a little sooner.
Karen.
So just building on my earlier comments, the reason I like keeping this in is because since I've been sitting in this chair, we've been going through a growth period and we've been consumed by development and also trying to cram in policy work to help us meet that demand. And one of the things that is in the OCP and now in our budgets during next year is neighborhood planning, which we desperately need. And keeping this number in actually buys us some time to do better neighborhood planning for all of our neighborhoods. So we understand what that 75% threshold looks like and we see what our community wants in our existing neighborhoods. It buys us that time so that we can do that work before we have this big whale of an application come in. And it will be a whale, even if it's a small portion of, of future neighborhood development, it'll be time consuming for all of us to consider it for our staff versus allowing, you know, us to do the zoning bylaw this year, start on our neighborhood plans, and we'll reach that threshold sooner rather than later. But to me, it just gives us that time to do what our community has asked throughout, which is control and manage the pace of growth and make sure we're ready for it. I mean, the top ask is about protecting the natural environment and jobs. And we need time to figure that out for our existing neighborhoods. Where, where do we go? And council always has a discretion to look at a proposal like a quest if it shows up before the 22,5. That's always our ability. But then it goes through a public process and an OCP and this, but this to me makes sense because it responds to what people have been telling us in engagement, about managing the pace of growth and it prepares us to be ready for, for what those neighborhoods should look like based on what our citizens have designed for their own neighborhoods where they exist today.
Yeah. The policy, policy precursors, just looking at the list here, do we have any idea when those might be completed? I mean, just a rough timeline?
I would have to go take a look at those for a second. I don't, I would say.
I think that within the next five years, those should be completed.
Could take that long?
It could take that long. It depends what council decides on priorities, right? Every year we go through the budget process and council makes a decision on what policy work we're going to do that year. So I think council does have control over those in resourcing that.
Some of them I think will be, will be done fairly soon. There are a few that we haven't identified a timeline for completing of a brand asset inventory, identifying specific rec and connectivity value of trails and rec assets that we don't, currently don't have that in, in the budget. And that could take some time. The steep slope DPA, wildfire protection pan, plan and wildfire risk areas, some of that, that's being worked on. The zoning bylaw will address a couple of those, affordable housing strategy is underway. So, and the community of many contribution policies underway. So it, it could be, it could be shorter depending on resourcing, it could be five.
I think it also provides an opportunity more intended for a developer to step forward to, I want to develop my lands now. I will give the district some money and donate some money to get, you know, one of these remaining furtheries done. So it's, it, it's not necessarily the district that will have to resource them.
But it, it will be, like, some of them are going to be involved in the zoning bylaw and so that will, it will be at least a couple of years. The zoning bylaw will probably be a year in a bit from now, a few years from now for adoption. So there certainly is a delay associated with those.
I think five years would be the maximum, the upper limit.
Ted.
Yeah, thanks. That's, that's interesting that some of the precursors might be part of that extraordinary benefit. So, so, so as long as we've got wording in there, it is, if somebody wants to come along and work on those.
I don't think precursors are, have anything to do with extraordinary benefits.
Well, no, no, except that Jonas just said, if a developer wants to come and offer the money to pay for it.
But that's, it's not, it's not an extraordinary, no.
But getting the money to.
It wouldn't be outside of the community benefit.
It would be not considered as how we evaluate extraordinary community benefit. It's helping the developer move it forward more quickly, but it's not what we would consider extraordinary, not even close.
It's covered by the.
Well, it's, it's part, it is a benefit in the sense that we're not paying for it. Anyway, okay, well, I'll leave that one. And, you know, to Karen's point, jobs, and I just read that list of questions in the book there, and I was quite surprised at how many people were talking about lack of single family homes. All the single family home builders are going like, where's the single family homes? There's all these big developers coming in from the city and we're running out of work. There was five or six letters in there about that. And so to the jobs and the single family and Ted.
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to talk about single family buildings at some point?
Sure, we can, I think, sure, go ahead.
Or, or I can do it.
No, I think it's an important part of the conversation because I, I think Jason made a really good point, is that supply isn't going to dictate costs. Lower mainland costs and pressures of lower mainland dictate what a house costs to you. Doesn't matter if it's a town home, condo, a single family home. We are so tied to lower mainland, we could flood the market with a thousand units tomorrow, the price would not go down.
Let me just say something.
There is, there is 900 some odd units on the university lands that haven't been built, something under. Within our improvement boundary, there are many multiple hundreds of possible, we have, some of them don't have zoning yet. We're not even talking about zoning yet on these future residential lands, that's another conversation. But, so I, I, I'm not even sure it's, it's necessarily relevant to the conversation today. It's relevant, I understand the context. But bottom line is there's tons of possibilities for single family homes in the community within the improvement containment area. So, you know, I don't know how much we want to go on about that, but that's, that's the numbers, that's what the numbers are.
Okay.
They're just, some, some of the problem is we just don't have the construction industry, we don't have the capacity to actually build the units that are, the demand is for. Like, there's only some amount of drywall over there and cement people and all those things. There's, there's a bit of a threshold there and most development companies in town can find enough workers to build what's currently on the books. So, I mean, this is a future focused conversation and it's the extraordinary community benefit which may bring it into the more of today's context. We could nitpick all these details to death, but I think fundamentally, the big question is how do we get to a point where we're incentivizing what we want to incentivize and encouraging what we want to encourage and creating the context for which we may consider future development? I think we, I think it's a bit of a distraction, some of this other conversation, but.
And, and the key for us is to answer these kind of seven questions. So I, I certainly am happy to focus on these. And I, I don't know if I've heard from everybody or have a sense where council is on this one, because I think there's a few different opinions on the 22,500 threshold and it'd be great to have a bit more clarity.
Well, for me, to be honest, I'm not too fussed about the 22,500. For me, it's the policy precursors that are the important piece because that's the context by which anything would be evaluated. And I actually think we're going to reach that in two or three years anyway. So I'm, I'm not, I, I think, I think the policy, for me, the, one of the biggest challenges for this council. So I'm not, I think the policy for me, one of the biggest challenges for this council has been we've had this influx of growth and development, but our policies were back in the nineties on a lot of these things. And we had to catch up with the policy piece. And we've got caught behind our policies on developments. And we're getting things that maybe weren't the best we could have gotten had our policies been good and robust. And you can see that in dozens of developments around town. So for me, the policy precursors are actually the really fundamental part to this. We want to make sure those are really well thought out and meaningful before anything moves forward. And there's some work to be done there. It's probably two to five years depending on how quickly it gets. But that for me is the important stuff. This number is a little bit random for me. I understand why a number would be helpful. But at the same time, for me, it's policy stuff that's going to evaluate all this in the future is the important stuff for me. I don't have anyone on the list, so Karen.
So to me, this number is not random. It's in the OCP. And at no point did we go out in engagement and say we would remove this number. So in fact, it's disingenuous, I think, to contemplate taking it out now. Because people have commented on the OCP, I think, believing that that wasn't going anywhere. I think that if we take this number away, an application could come in the day after we approve the OCP. And I don't think that's good or helpful for this community. I think that defeats the purpose of trying to have neighborhood planning, to focus on infill, to build out our transit. We will be focused on trying to imagine what the future neighborhood is supposed to look like when we haven't even imagined what our current neighborhoods look like. I'm excited by the fact that next year we could start on neighborhood planning and we could focus on that without the distraction of a future neighborhood development coming into the district. And so I think that number is really important and I think we'll meet it faster than we even want to. Because, you know, but I think we should buy ourselves time. I think we should live up to that number which the community is living with. I think it's fair and I think it allows us to do the work we need to do to be ready for when we hit that threshold. So I'd like to leave it in there.
Thank you. Sue, thanks. I don't know. I read a lot of the engagement that said take it out. And I think most of the engagements said take it out. I think futures of schools and some of our schools that are having land up there are really interested in taking the cap out and then building in different areas and having different community methods. I agree that extraordinary community benefits, we have the opportunity to negotiate with the landowner for the bench lands and actually get an extraordinary community project that we dictated. But because of the cap, we're going to get to that cap next year. Like the amount of houses we have on the books, if we leave this cap in there, we will get to the cap next year, threshold, sorry. We will get to the threshold next year and we will have no say. So I prefer to have policy that says extraordinary community benefits and policy in place that address all items identified. I'm below, I don't agree with all of the changes that the landowners put forward, but I think some of them are sensible and the removal of the cap. The other cap is a great threshold.
I just want to.
The other threshold is a great number.
I want to just correct something. Even if we achieve that twenty two five hundred a day, there's still the policy precursors that will still.
Exactly. So there's no meaning to actually having two numbers.
No, I, no, but I just wanted to correct it. You said if this was out there, we'd have an application there. It's like, no, we still have.
Yeah.
Unless we decide not to have any policy precursors.
I think all the neighborhood planning is absolutely essential as well. But I think that having a good project and having like good policy and good projects. We've seen a lot of good projects that are actually neighborhood plans as well that go through robust public engagement. Allows us the possibility to grow the community in ecologically and sustainably friendly way without having an arbitrary number put on it. I do think the number is rather arbitrary and I've also listened to the public input and the amount of letters that we received saying remove the cap, we're way more than keep the cap. I don't think, I don't remember reading, please keep the cap again.
Was there, was there the rationale when this was first proven in the OCP, I don't know, late nineteen ninety years? I can't remember exactly, but was there rationale for this number?
I can speak to the forensic work that happened a few years ago. So that nineteen ninety eight OCP was based on an estimation that we had enough capacity to grow within existing sort of developed areas to accommodate twenty thousand. And then with the two thousand and nine OCP.
Twenty years later, we're at twenty thousand, interestingly.
And so that was projected. And then in the OCP update in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that was relying on the two thousand and five growth management strategy. They reran the numbers, did a full analysis around available capacity and estimated that. And that's where the number bumped, was bumped up from twenty thousand to twenty two five. And it was embedded as more of a direct policy statement. And it was estimated at that time that, you know, a lot of the initial developments that were, that were being contemplated and approved but hadn't been built out, still hadn't reached that build out point. So they just raised it a little bit further to give a little bit more time for, you know, university and downtown oceanfront, those types of developments and waterfront landings sort of build out. So it has been kind of bumping up. And so I think there's just been reflected on that.
OCPs you rejig every time you have new information. I think it was Doug.
Yeah.
Did you know about you, Jason?
No, through the staff and just to be clear, this twenty two five number or any number, that's not necessarily just the census we would look at. Is there some other source of numbers? I think you've mentioned it once before.
Yeah. Yes. So based on, I think you'd raised a comment much earlier in the process. And so we've amended the language in here. I could look through, but it does say, oh yeah, population has reached whatever as identified by either annual provincial population estimates or the federal census. So we've set up that number, the province estimates every year a number. And so we've set it up so either that number or the federal census could trigger. So that there's, it's not like every four or five years you can.
Are the provincial estimates accurate?
And they're pretty good. They use a bunch of different data and, you know, they're not a count, but they're worthy of using as a.
But they use housing starts and births and hospital and all that.
Connections as well.
I guess where I'm left with that is I am torn, to be honest. I look at the CHICAI, we have not approved yet, but we have entertained the zoning application. There's no twenty two five threshold applying to those lands, but there was a significant community benefit and that's the barrier that protects a lot of surrounding areas. So I'm kind of at the position with this one where I do agree with the policy issue. I think we've got to have policy. And I think this twenty two five number is becoming practically as we speak is becoming less relevant. And so it almost doesn't matter whether we put it in or not. We're kind of going to be in the same place at the end of the day. I think it's going to leave it as a matter of fairness to council and the staff. Make sure that we try to get through those policy precursors in a relatively timely way so that we don't unduly stop the process just by that alone, by that inactivity. But I would leave it in for the time being. I say that because, you know, the reality is council two years from now, which might be quite a few different people, can come along and amend. I mean, that's just the reality of it. Just like we could have taken it out last term, they could take it out and they could approve a development if there was compelling reasons and would appeal to them. So this is a best division, but I think for the moment I agree. We've gone to the public with that. I take that point. I don't want to start moving goalposts with the public particularly. So I'd be inclined to leave it in, but I do think we need, it's almost like a moral commission from staff and council to start moving the policy piece along. So, but this might happen five years, it might be three years, it might be two years, who knows? But we do it in a timely manner. So it's not the policy that's really holding this program up.
I have Jason and Ted.
Does staff know approximately, how many units a year are we adding? Is it like about three hundred, four hundred?
It's about three hundred.
Yeah, so.
I think this year the tax will set on five. It is the.
This year was irregular, but I think if you look in the last five years, you know, and that's what we should look at.
It may be the new regular.
It may be the new regular. There may be a correction in the market in the future. We don't know. But I think three hundred is a safe assumption.
And so like, you know, if you, you know, multiply that by two, that kind of is a bit of a population growth suggestion there. But, I mean, so basically we're growing at, you know, six hundred or so a year, maybe.
Three, four years will be able to.
Yeah, so I think that is, we should, we should just keep it. And there's lots of good reasons why and I understand why. Most of the correspondence that I've seen is from parents of the Waldorf School who have been promised a new school. And I understand if I was a parent of folks at that school, like I would want this to happen sooner rather than later. But I think by and large, just in general, I think people, the core values are about, you know, managing growth. And that is the thing that I hear a lot about. So I'm okay with keeping that.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you, Jason. Ted.
Yeah, well, I like what Doug said again on this. And, you know, we can't, we could start the precursor conversation, but the next council could stop it. So.
But there's a process involved with that.
Yeah. So I would like to see a little bit of wording in there that at least allows a developer, if he wants to buck up for some of those things, the ability to do that. And I also support Karen's. I mean, when the growth management plan was done in two thousand and five, believe it or not, I was probably sitting in this same chair. And I fought for it wholeheartedly because I listened to everybody and all the specialists and everything. So, you know, but if there's some wording in there to allow, like the CHICAI fan, it wasn't even in there. And I'd be happy with it.
Peter.
I'm not particularly married to twenty two five, but I do understand that it's, it is more entrenched in people's consciousness in the community. But I think the cursor filters and the policy of both, it's going to be the key piece that dictates a lot of this. And, you know, as you said, the growth rate right now is fast approaching that mark.
So it's almost ten after five. We have four more, I guess?
Four more, yeah.
This is probably the most debatable plan, do you think?
Yeah, the precursors, I think I've heard pretty clearly there's strong support for that.
Yeah. So why don't we just, let me just table this one for a moment and do the last three. I'm just trying to gauge timing because I want to make sure council a bit of a break. And if we need to reconvene in another growth management session, we will. Yeah. So let's do four, six, seven and see how we go.
Okay. So this is the policy that says limited development in future residential neighborhood parcels would not be considered until the identified policy precursors have been completed. Those are the brand asset inventory, which is knowing where our trails and rec assets are. A community amenity contribution policy, which is in progress. An affordable housing strategy, missing middle housing policy, which is in our OCP and associated zoning regs, which will be taken on in the next major project that our department is undertaking. A community wildfire protection plan, which is underway. That's, we need to get that before we can do a wildfire DPA and a steep slope development permit area.
The only one, and maybe it's somehow in there, is sort of greenfield development. How do we evaluate them from a financial point of view? Like, I feel like there should be a greenfield development criteria or evaluation or something. And I'm not articulating it very well, but.
Yeah, I think the sub area plan requirements, there's a lot of elements that are identified in sub area planning and all of these greenfield areas would fall under sub area plan requirements. And there's a fiscal, what do you call it? Fiscal impact assessment required to do sub area planning or as part of sub area planning. So it may be that what you're contemplating is captured in the sub area plan process.
Yeah, and the CAC policy might help capture some of that greenfield stuff and.
That's exactly the, I think our CAC policy will address from an amenity perspective the requirements for greenfield development targets.
I just want to make sure that was encapsulated. Harry and Doug.
Oh, I didn't have my hand up. I'm supportive of the well being.
Yeah, generally I am as well. And the word considered in practical terms, because it was also in the previous one. Take large developments who, as we all know, have significant pathway before they get to the point where even the zoning application comes in, or the first application comes in. There's a lot of pre-application stuff that has to go on. Do we mean that don't even come to city hall? Or do we mean that it's not going to first reading? Or do we mean that we're not going to accept money in the application? Is there any kind of standard policy around any of that?
Maybe some clarity would be good.
If I may. It means don't make the application because the reason for these policies is that so we can assess them appropriately. Because once people come through the door, they make the application, you know, there's a perception that, you know, I'm locked into the policy of the day. And that is fair to, you know, to assume. So I think it's important for us to finish these, work on the policy so we know what we are looking for in these applications.
Ted.
I know we've brought this up a couple of times. What if the parcel land being proposed for development does the precursors for the year? Or if they say, we'll take that off, that to me is a good incentive. You know, fire risk, policy on housing strategy, you know, I mean, some of that stuff, we're almost there. Steep slope development permit area.
I mean, if someone wants someone to pay for that, we still have some capacity issues and stuff and it has to be considered in the work plan. And as long as it's our work and not someone else's work, if someone wants to throw money at it, I can't see why we would say no.
Investment.
Yes, but I think we would be looking for it for the whole district, not just for that area.
Yeah, oh, exactly. There's a bigger context for sure.
I don't mind people paying for our policy, but as long as we do the work. So if that's the route people want to go, then I think we would have to put wording in there that the development would be assessed against the new policy and not existing policy. To Jonas's point is that once you put something in, you anticipate having it approved based on what currently exists in policy. And that was our problem through this growth phase is we didn't have the right policy in place with which to evaluate things. So we ended up with things we didn't want. So that's why these are important to me. So if someone wants to pay for them, I don't know if we can even mandate this. They, we're not evaluating until the policy's done.
Well, I think that's what the sentence is saying. They're not considering until the policy is developed.
But we'll still.
So it's a pre-consideration deal.
It's a pre-consideration deal for funding policy. Okay.
Yeah, you get into a bit of a dangerous territory because then there's an expectation. We're not even talking about rezoning at this point. It's just a matter of being able to make an application. So, you know, we don't want to create that application. So I think Doug's point too, that we can't dilly-dally and just use not doing these policies to just delay, purposefully delay, but be, I mean, be purposeful in actually getting these done.
Well, and I think that's an important thing is that we need to look at that list and go, those are things we would, we actually, no need to be done. Like, I look at that list and there isn't anything on there that I would dilly-dally about. Like, we've asked for and we've wanted all those things. So, you know, I know. So I think that's.
So we need no dilly-dallying.
I can use that term.
I might add, that's the connection also with the.
That way, let's.
Sorry, that's the connection with the OCP in terms of its implementation and then the connection with the strategic plan and council and annual work planning. So if these are identified as priorities and policy precursors that need to be in place, I think the important part is that that translation happens and that linkage happens with strategic plans and work planning and so on and so forth. So there's an actual plan in place to accomplish these within a timeline and budgeting this for resources a lot of time.
Ted.
The kind of point that I was getting at is like, the trail, valuable trails and assess. That one there, why wouldn't the individual land pay for that? Why would we as a district want to take on all the private properties?
Go ahead.
I think that was something that's come out of our discussion earlier where there is, I think there is a feeling that if we get an application and it says, hey, we. hey, we've got a world-class asset on our land, and so it's an extraordinary benefit. I think the idea is that council could have more confidence in that if they had already looked at everything compared to each other, right? And we knew that, yes, that indeed is the best trails? Or is it that that's a great trail, but actually there's some great ones that are even better over there?
Well, I can understand that, but why would up the hill here have to do the trails out near the condo?
So that we know how they mesh into the network for our overall asset inventory so that we know.
Okay, but I mean, that part of our research would be.
There may be pieces of that.
Well, but I mean, if you say, "How do all your trails connect to all the other trails in town?" And they say, "These are how all our trails connect to all the trails in town." But why would they have to do a bunch of research on valuable? They just tell you, anyway, that's that point there.
I think we're nitpicking a little bit.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm just trying to move, you know.
Ted.
Thanks. Yeah, a brand asset inventory, that's enormously broad. I fear that some of these policies are just like, a lot of these I agree with, but these are responsibility of us to complete and not the responsibility. Like, we've accepted applications for all sorts of developers, no matter, you know, like without policy in place, and we don't know what policy we need until we have a problem. So we're never going to address all the policy. We definitely need better, you know, like double chasing of the CACs before we have these policies in place I don't agree with. But to complete all of that could be ten years.
Do you think by that statement, I just didn't understand the name?
The chasing of CACs. So basically, we have a policy and we, you know, we try and stuff everything into our CAC policy without having, in the absence of affordable housing, in the absence of these things. So we try and collect CACs for community growth as opposed to having policy in place that says ten percent to fifteen percent of affordable housing and missing middle has to be done this way. So right now, what we're currently doing is trying to get all of these.
Because we don't have these other policies.
Because we don't have the policies in place. So a lot of them I agree with, but you can't ju, the vague ones need to be pulled out until we have a better.
What are the vague ones?
I, brand asset inventory is really, we have twelve kilometers. We, like, in my mind, I can map the trail, like, we have a trail inventory and we already know what it is, that's mapped already on trail works and numerous assets. So, you know, like, why do we require understanding, like, walkability, I understand.
I don't think it's only trails, it's, there could be habitat, brand asset inventory.
It says recreational and connectivity values.
I think that was examples, but.
Twelve length of, because our community's square kilometers, who are doing square kilometers is different.
No, I live twenty-two kilometers from downtown, I'm in the district, so it's much bigger than twelve. But anyway.
My point is that the policies, to have a list of policies and just say that we have to adopt or consider all of these policies before is prohibitive.
I think it's meant to be prohibited, proved. That's the intention. So if that's not council's intention, that's where the discussion point is, but I.
It depends if you're in a housing crisis or not, and I think we're, you know, you want affordable housing, that goes against applications.
And in which case, any council of the day can go, "These are holding us back from achieving this goal," and you, not an extraordinary benefit, just amend the OCP.
We can't just keep amending our OCP, though. We can't just keep going like.
We amend it every five years, doesn't matter, of course.
We don't, when was the last time we did a robust amendment to our OCP? No, that was not a robust public engagement amendment to the OCP. The last one was in like two thousand, when I first moved here.
It was the same process. It was an eight-year process.
Yes.
The last OCP was a major big.
I ran, yeah, because.
Every time I live, I think for twenty-five years.
It wasn't adopted until twenty-one.
The last re-admission for us changed.
We're getting hungry.
Yeah. Actually, I think we need to stop the meeting now because we need some time. We've got a whole, a big agenda tonight. So we need to maybe schedule a follow-up next week to this conversation.
But for this one, there's general support.
Yes, for this one, yes.
And I think for the previous one, there were at least four councillors who would keep that threshold. Like, I think we've made progress, right?
I think we've made progress. We've made, we tabled the twenty-two to five hundred.
Why?
Because I tabled it on the chair. Because what I was hearing was that we wanted to understand some of these precursors in context with how it might apply to twenty-two five hundred. You can put a motion for it, you know the rules, if you'd like to have that considered. I just think we're reaching our threshold as council. We need a bit of a break. We need to have a conversation next week. This is a big conversation we were pinched because of time constraints on the other side of the agenda, so I just don't want to feel like this is being squeezed. So if it's okay with council, we will refer, refer, refer the continuation of this conversation to a meeting next week, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn next meeting. If I can, I can tell those in favor, or those in favor.